Evening, everyone. Welcome to Bristol Town Council Meeting of August 24th. We get all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks, everyone. I apologize for the couple of minute delay on the start.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the executive session minutes for July 13, 2022.
Motion to approve the previous submission of minutes.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is A2. This is the executive session meeting minutes from August 3, 2022, when there was a request to unseal the minutes and motion pertaining to the Kane's Way matter. So the motion would be to accept and approve the minutes for the executive session as presented in unseal the minutes motion and vote pertaining to the Kane's Way matter.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last meeting minutes for the town council meeting of August 3, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B1. This is William Conley, DBA Luxury Goods, et cetera, 12 Gooding Avenue. This is a request for junk and secondhand dealers license.
Excellent. As the court pointed out, this is a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is William here?
He did inform me that he's been very ill and he was in the hospital, so he was not able to make it this evening.
Excellent. I'm going to assume that William was speaking in favor. How's that?
He was speaking in favor, yes.
And we wish him well. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2022-9, Chapter 16, to motor vehicles and traffic. And this is for parking prohibited at all times to add a no parking box on Ryan Avenue. This is second reading.
I make a motion. Do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance 2022-8, Chapter 17, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 5. And this is prohibition against cannabis smoking vaporizing in public places. This is first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C3. This is ordinance 2022-10, Chapter 17, offenses and miscellaneous provisions. And this is to extend an alcohol beverage license establishment closing time to midnight after a six-month review period. First reading.
Motion to approve the first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C4. This is ordinance 2022-11, Chapter 16, motor vehicles and traffic, Article 5. And this is for parking prohibited at all times to add a no parking in the vicinity of 300 High Street. This is first reading.
Motion to approve first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is William Conley, doing business as luxury goods, et cetera, 12 Gooding Avenue. This is a request for the junk and secondhand dealers license.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve the license. Any discussion?
Just that the PD had asked for a six-month review, so I don't know if Councilman Texer would just...
Certainly, will he add that to it?
So the motion will include a six-month review, seconded by Mary? Excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Courtney Gertin, from Molly Pooza, 230 Witch Street. This is a request for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for Sunday, October 9, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. and Courtney is here today.
Counsel? Courtney, you can get up.
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't sure.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we would have gotten there. And if you were watching this meeting and thinking, do they ever talk about anything before they vote on it? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Courtney Gertin, 54 Charles Street, Bristol.
So why don't you tell us what you're looking for?
Sure. I am on the board of Almost Home Rescue Rhode Island. We are an all-volunteer nonprofit dedicated to rescuing, rehabilitating, and rehoming dogs in need throughout Rhode Island. And we are hosting our annual fundraiser on Sunday, October 9, as Melissa mentioned, which is the Columbus Day weekend at the Cup Defenders. The event is actually 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., but I'm requesting the music be from 3:00 to 7:00. We're going to have a little lull there, and I'd like it to end early as well. Just clamboil, tons of food, a big raffle. And like I said, every penny goes to rescuing dogs throughout Rhode Island.
Courtney, if somebody's interested in going, can they go? Can they buy a ticket ahead of time? How's it work?
We sell tickets in advance. I'm limiting the number of tickets, and we're selling very limited tickets at the door, so I'll have a good idea of the count. And I'm, you know, working hand-in-hand with the Cup Defenders, so the alcohol will be sold inside. You know, per their rules, they handle all of that. And I'm just handling the food and the raffles.
If someone's interested in buying tickets, how would they do it?
There's a Facebook page, and I also have posters, and they can text me or you call me.
Well, Courtney, I went to this event last year. I thought it was really good. It was very well-run.
11 years. Well, I'm still working on...
I was going to ask you, you used to do this in your backyard, and then you grew out of it, and that's how it became...
I did. It started as just a little party, and then recharge for food, and we raised $400 the first year. And it kept growing through, you know, throughout the years. Last year, we raised almost $8,000. And this year, I hope to raise 10 because I've added sponsorships. I've already, I already have $2,500 committed in company sponsorships from local businesses, so that's great.
Congratulations. It's excellent.
Maybe we could reach out to you as we do some other events with the town. You seem to have some success with them.
Well, I am on the Bristol Harbor Festival, not on the fleet committee, but I'm happy to help.
It's another successful event.
Yes, it was.
You got it. You're on a roll. Well, based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that with... Is there a discussion? Yes, please. Courtney, 100% in support, obviously. The, and it was not you, but about three weeks ago, there was someone who had an event there, and the music was just blowing off ears, you know? I live three streets away, and it was like if they were playing my backyard. So I'm glad to see that you already reduced the time. I mean, moved the time certainly is that that's very much appreciated. So just keep, you know, near to the volume.
Absolutely. I'm definitely well-aware, and I know that that was an ACDC heavy metal tribute band. We have a Beatles jazz band during the clamboil, and then Keats and Company, which is a local band, but it's kind of softer, more Grateful Dead kind of rock, so... But I will absolutely make sure that the volume is appropriate.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D3. This is Catherine Harworth, doing business as Riccardi's Sandwich Shop from 11 Gooding Avenue. This is a request for transfer of Class BV Limited intoxicating beverage license to Benjamin Howard Riccardi's of Bristol LLC, doing business as Riccardi's Sandwich Shop. This is new ownership. Call for public hearing on September 21st.
Move to call for a public hearing on September 21st?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to call public hearing on September 21st. Is there any discussion?
Just, it seems like it calls for a transfer. Does that mean that we're going to miss out on this family that's been running that business for many, many years? Oh, okay. So it's staying in the family. That's awesome. Quick, glad to hear.
I had a broccoli pie in my head. I'm sorry. So we had a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to call for public hearing on September 21st. Is there any other discussion?
A spinach pie.
Can you add some cheese to that and heat it up? Because it's really good.
Big place. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D4. This is Lori Cruz for the Bristol Christmas Festival. This is a request for the mobile food establishment event permit for the Bristol Christmas Festival weekend for Saturday, December 10, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday, December 11, from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record and give us a nice quick summary of what you're looking for.
Absolutely. Lori Cruz, Truvasland, as well as Rhode Island. So we put in a petition to have up to four food trucks this year at a Bristol festival weekend. I want to make a change, though. However, on Sunday, the hours are from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It is not to 8:00 p.m. So we are, we are, we are doing a larger festival this year, so we are looking to place the majority of these food trucks if approved down at the Maritime Center. I'd already spoken to the Hopper Festival, the Hopper Master, and he is, he is in agreement that we'll be able to put them in the parking spaces down there. We may have three down there and possibly one on Court Street. We're kind of still working all of that out. So that's our request.
Counsel?
Well, I mean, I think everybody thought it was a great event last year. It was like incredibly successful. People were coming from everywhere, so, you know, looking forward to the new version.
We are definitely hoping that we're able to pull, you know, between, I think we had between 7,000 and 10,000 people that attended last year. So we're hoping to pull that draw in again this year.
Yeah, awesome. Definitely. I was definitely blown away by the amount of people that showed up to the town, and every street was filled, and, you know, we want to deliver. So, yeah.
It was such an exciting time. Absolutely.
Well, based on the recommendations, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Don't go anywhere.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. This is Lori Cruz, Bristol Christmas Festival Committee. This is a request for the use of the town property on December 10 and 11, and permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages for the Bristol Christmas Festival weekend, Saturday, December 10, 10 to 8, and Sunday, December 11, from 12 to 8.
Again, I'd like to make a change on the Sunday date from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So thank you for entrusting us last year with, you know, being able to serve, you know, the alcoholic beverage last year. So we are seeking for that approval again this year, in that we'll be on the grounds of where we had it last year, right in front of one of the huts in front of the Burnside Building. Basically, we're planning on in similar area, you know, if not a couple of huts over. I don't know if I need to describe the huts, but...
You gave us important documentation.
All right.
And it's the same...
It is, it is grog.
Grog. Glog.
Glog, right. And that is, that is a mulled wine.
Okay, excellent.
So it'll be sold at just a certain time, like I believe last year it was just Saturday night, wasn't it?
Last year, we had it on Saturday from, I believe it was from 4:30, 5:30 to 8:00, and then on Sunday, it was from 4:00 to 6:00. However, this year, we are looking to increase those times.
And you have a maximum drink of...
We were doing one. We didn't have...
So now it will be...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So one again. Excellent.
Yes. And like I said, we are looking to increase those times, you know, preferably from, you know, the hours of 12 on.
Again, I think it was a very successful event, is very well-run, based on all of the department heads. They have no objections. So based on that, I'll make a motion to approve, and I'm excited.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approves. Is there any other discussion? I'll just add that I reached out to the chief, and I understand you're going to have some more discussion with the chief and his police department, which is exactly the way it should go. One of my questions to the chief was making sure that alcohol was cordoned, as we do with anything like this. So I just want to make sure, and I'd already shared with the chief, I have faith and trust in the chief and his department and the Christmas Festival Committee to make sure that the right things happened, because they happened right last year, so I'm assuming that's...
Okay, thank you.
So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1. This is Michael Riley, Chair of the James D. Riley Foundation, and David Scarpino. This is a request regarding the placement of a temporary Santa House.
It's Christmas in August.
It's always Christmas.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike O'Reilly, 21 Sandy Lane, Bristol.
Dave Scarpino, 932 Hope Street, Bristol.
The floor is yours, gentlemen.
Why, thank you. I think I'll go first. Thank you for letting us speak. We're doing the Santa House this year, and we'll show you a rendering of it, and also, Mike, we'll talk about the foundation, just to separate ourselves, because sometimes there's confusion. We are part of the Christmas Festival Committee of the town, both Mike and I, Lori and, well, my daughter Laura, but we're also on the James D. Riley Foundation. So the Santa House will come under the James D. Riley Foundation. But we work together, and it'll be there for Christmas. I just want to make sure that's, that delineation is clear. So we're talking about a temporary Santa House. It's 14 by 20. We're ordering it as a ready-built shed, if you might call it. It's got a front porch to it, and when it's delivered, we will make it look like and transition it to an authentic Santa-looking house. You'll have a kubla on it. It will look Christmasy. You'll see a picture of it. And as we get ready for that, I've been working with the town in terms of Steve Greenleaf to make sure, from a building perspective, that we've talked to him. I've showed him the drawings, how it will be constructed, answered any and all of his questions. And also, we are going before the historic commission district, District Commission. On September 1, I've been working with Jonathan Ames to make sure that all of their questions and issues are addressed. So we're trying to be as compliant as possible. For instance, when I talk to Steve Greenleaf, his major concern is, when is it coming in? Is it temporary in nature? When is it leaving? And are you going to make sure it's all ADA compliant? And the answer to all of those is, yes, it will come in at the end of October. It will leave. We're, we're going to try to sync it up, so when the town shudders all of its lights, we're going to remove the house, so it's kind of in concert. It'll kind of come up together and go down together. We'll make sure that no matter what we have it elevated on, because we will have to move it, that any elevation that we have ramps that are appropriate and do comply with code. We did talk about some spaces for handicap parking, so we are working with the property owner to see if we can't, what we would call convenience parking for anybody who has a need to do it adjacent to that property at the corner of Thames and State Street. So we're trying to make sure that we do everything so that when someone comes to inspect it, that we are up to code. And we've worked with Diane. We've worked with everybody who's talked to us.
So Dave, what do you, I'm just curious about what you're going to do there. Is it going to be like a Santa going to be in there for like certain times, or is it like a light?
We talked about the where, the what, when, and all that stuff, but we haven't really talked about the why. I don't want it to be confused with just pictures with Santa. Anybody can go to the mall. It's, it's not going to be like that. You'll certainly be able to get pictures with Santa. That will certainly be part of it. But this is really for children of special needs that can't go to a mall, that can't go to a photographer's session because of various reasons, right? Tension deficit reasons, mental challenges, those types of things, that they just can't do that. This is really my gift to the town. We're not making any money on this. This is not a business. This all comes under the James D. Riley Foundation, that guy right there, and that oil painting over there that's named after him. This is really our gift to the community, and it is part of Christmas, and that's why we want to be associated with the Christmas Festival. We'll also be working with other nonprofit organizations. We want to have the grand opening of the, of the Santa House to coincide with Jen Manzies' community fun, annual community fun drive that she always does. We're going to use the house. So all the toys will go there. But again, it's really for children of special needs. We will have it open during the season for families and for pictures, but it's, that's what we're intending to do.
That's great. Well, that's really, that's really a nice idea, actually.
If I could add, because, before you show the picture, oh, okay, because I'm particularly touched by this. And to give you an idea, I always say to Mike, we've been on this journey now for a couple of months, and every time we need something to happen, the universe talks to us. I know that sounds silly, and I always say, your Papa's talking to us. He's helping us. So the other day, we happened to be in the Old Dunkin' Donuts, and we're trying to measure it up to put some of the old glow globes, glow globes, that were up in the DPW, little sled, a couple reindeer, so we can start to tell people what we're going to do. And who walks by? The three people, two elderly people about my age, and a young adult. And you can see the young adult's eyes, clearly there's an autistic issue. We invite them in. He comes in, and he sees Santa in the sled. He sees the two reindeer, and his eyes light up. And I look at Mike, and I say, this is why we're doing this. This is why we're doing this. It's for those individuals that struggle, and that makes it all worthwhile. So...
It was just to make him cry.
It does. It does. I mean, there's something about it that is special, and, and we want to, you know, all of this is in conjunction with the Christmas Festival, and we want to do this for the town. We want to make sure that everybody's successful.
So you're going to be doing also the Old Dunkin' Donuts and having that all festered as well?
Yes, we are. So, so the Dunk, well, going to use the Dunkin' Donuts, kind of jumping over to the other committee. The Dunkin' Donuts Corner, Aiden was kind enough to allow us to use it again this year. We're not going to be building a workshop in there. Obviously, it's going to be at the Santa Claus House, but we are going to be using that space to kind of announce the house, hopefully get some donations, and we have some special decorations that we're going to put up in there. And then the Christmas Festival Committee will also use that as a photo place where folks can go in and take pictures, because we're going to decorate it like we always do. To be another stop on, you know, kind of the journey through town, because now, you know, we're, we're expanding from Burnside. Lori talked about the hub being at Burnside, but we will be doing some activities down at the Maritime Center. I talked to Lyndon Place today to get them involved. We've already talked to all of the new businesses up at Unity Park to make sure that we push people up to there, so that everybody in town enjoys the crowd, because it will be a big crowd. So it'll just be another part of our route.
This is counsel's pleasure.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, and I think this is, adds a lot of charm and spirit to the town, making, and making it a destination. And this is going to touch a lot of adults and kids for years to come, so I'm definitely in support.
I second that. I mean, I love Christmas stuff.
So we had a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. He got you, Mary. He actually hit it first. Seconded by Aaron to approves, and is, it looks like you wanted to show us a photo before...
I did want to show the rendering of the house. Not too garish, not, we wanted to make sure that it fit in style with, if you've ever seen any Santa Houses at any amusement parks or anything like that. Sometimes they look cartoonish. We didn't want it to look cartoonish, but we did want it to look whimsical. And essentially, as Dave mentioned, what we're doing is we're taking a large shed, and we're going to make it look very close to this.
North Pole chic. I like it.
So we have arranged to have it stored over at Franklin. It's going to be stored just like a boat. I mean, it's going to be moved just like a boat, and it'll be stored just like a boat.
You'll need some volunteer elves to help you.
So we will be looking for volunteers throughout the season to man the house. I did want to mention one thing. Tim mentioned that it will be a destination. There isn't another Santa Claus House in the country. It's in Midland, Michigan. And that house gets 100,000 visitors, and it's not open all year round. It's only open at Christmas time. But 100,000 visitors a year go to Midland, Michigan, just to see the house. And I know the owners. I know a lot of the businesses around, and they, they see that traffic. They see those people coming into town just to see the house and take pictures of it.
So it's going to be decorated inside as like a workshop, you said?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
So inside will be Hallmark-worthy. That's the way I look at it. That's the way I like to describe it.
If you have extra Christmas decorations around the house, you want to...
David, be careful. That's where I was going.
I do have handouts if you, I don't know if you want them or not, but we...
Please leave them here, so if the public wants to grab it, that would be great.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
You may need to add the approval, subject to the approval of the HTC and the Building Department.
Yes.
So, Tim, you made the motion. Could you add that if you're comfortable?
So moved.
Aaron, second. Any other discussion?
Just briefly, will it come with the trees, though?
No, but we do have trees on. We do have, if you know the spot, there are bushes and trees there. We are going to decorate those trees, and we will put, there will be trees in the front, you know, artificial trees, obviously.
Also landscapers that might just be happy.
Well, we'll see how many people want to help and volunteer.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great job.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D2. This is Dave Scarpino, the chairman of the Bristol Christmas Festival. And this is for the review and approval of the proposed revisions to the Bristol Christmas Festival bylaws.
Change hats. So Dave Scarpino, 932 Hope Street. Do you want me to give a brief description of...
I'll tell you, if my colleagues are okay with it, I reached in advance of the meeting, I reached out to the solicitor. And on something like bylaws, I think it would probably be most appropriate, unless there's something that someone wanted to go over specifically. I think we can refer to the solicitor to review, make sure it's in keeping with our local guidelines, quote-quote, if you will. And maybe at our next meeting, come back and give recommendation if there's any proposed changes.
Any...
Second.
So, motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the solicitor to come back to our next meeting. Is there any other discussion?
I went through the edits. It doesn't seem like it's too much out of line. It seems like you're keeping the document up to date, which is great.
We're trying to live by it, and to live by it, you have to change it to make sure that it's consistent with what you're doing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Living document, definitely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3. This is Tony Martini, Chair of the Bristol Conservation Committee. And this is in regard to the board's recommendation for the creation of the Consolidated Energy Aggregation Program for the time of...
Good evening. Tony Martini, 46 Highland Road, here in town. Again, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission in Bristol. I am so happy to be following Santa Claus and Christmas to talk to you about electricity. I just hope that the good feeling that you've had about Santa and Christmas follows me to this presentation. So I'm here to talk to you about the Community Choice Aggregation Program. I think you've heard a presentation on this before. But just really quickly, in three bullets, what this is about is hopefully reducing the cost for electricity to Bristolians with, with all of us hearing about electricity going up 47% this winter. I think an opportunity to do that should be looked at. But more, it'll, the Conservation Commission is in favor of it almost as much, because it increases the amount of renewable energy that we'll all be consuming, which will cut down on, on climate change and help the environment. Right now, Rhode Island consumes about 19% of their electricity comes from renewables, targets to get to 100 by 2030. If we do this, we will help Rhode Island move toward their renewable energy target, which will, will help all of us. Just real quick, the way that we buy electricity now, and not many people know this, but if you just sign up for Rhode Island Energy, which we all have to, because it's kind of the only game in town, and you make no other choices, you get whatever energy Rhode Island Energy has contracted for, for you to get. It's all, it's all mostly fossil fuel today. You do have the opportunity to choose somebody else, but not many people do that. Maybe 10 or 15% of people do that. So your default is whatever Rhode Island Energy has contracted for. Under this program, the default would be a high... Under this program, the default would be a higher renewable energy contact, content electricity program. So if you didn't make any choices, you would get a program that produced, that gave you electricity, produce more through renewables than it does now and whose prices are negotiated in aggregate to drive our costs down. So as importantly, both our costs should go down. That's the idea. If it doesn't, I would urge us not to do it. But if we can negotiate, make sure our costs go down. And the electricity we buy is more renewables and it's risk free. So if somebody doesn't want to do this, they can opt out. If somebody does this and doesn't like it anymore, they can opt out at that time or they can just, they can just go with it. So in summary, and Jamie Rhodes is here from Good Energy. I know he presented to you, he presented to us in May, an hour and a half presentation with questions and answers. He provided supplementary materials to us, answered a whole bunch of our questions. So we gave it very thorough consideration. And in June, we voted unanimously to ask you to create a, a Community Choice Aggregation Program for Bristol. There are seven other towns in the state that are doing it. Barrington, Providence, Central Falls, Portsmouth, Newport, South Kingston and Eric Gansett. They're going in at around right now about 30% renewables. The state's at about 20. So they're going in at a higher level. There are 53 cities and towns in Massachusetts that are doing it. So we'd be in good company. We're not, we're not out there trying this out. There are a lot of, a lot of cities and towns that feel like getting more of their energy from renewables is a good idea and keeping costs down is a good idea, especially in, again, a risk free environment. So. Yes, Mary.
And I wasn't really clear about what, what is the projection of the savings like for kilowatt hour or whatever?
I, I'd like to defer to Jamie on that as he's had more experience. I would tell you that, like with anything, especially in the energy industry, it's hard to like put a hard number on it. But Jamie, let me ask you to.
I would say because it is very concerning, like the cost of energy plus the cost of this like 47% increase that's projected for us.
Forty.
I don't know what to do.
It's astounding. No, it's, it's really, it's frightening. Yeah, I, I will tell you, we put solar on our house in April. So our bill is great. It's in the range of zero, but not everybody has that. You know, my daughter just bought a house in East Street and, you know, they're very concerned. So Jamie, let me.
I feel short, sorry. Yes, my name is Jamie Rhodes. I'm at 160 Wind Socket Hill Road in North Smithfield, Rhode Island. Yeah. And I know I sent along a presentation, a lot of its information that we went through last year when we had the, the original discussion. So I will not repeat unless of course we want to go dive back into those details, which I'm happy to do. I'll tackle that question first and the, I can give you a retrospective, what has happened in the past. I can't necessarily, as I've always said, I cannot predict the future. And this year with electricity prices proved to us that you cannot predict the future of what's going to happen here. So I will not endeavor to try. But what we have, what we've generally seen over the course of our, the aggregation programs that we manage in Massachusetts is about a 5% savings, give or take. Some, some, and that is over the life of a contract, not in any individual rate period. Since the rates change every six months, we look over the life of the contracts that we, that we're able to negotiate on behalf of our municipal clients. That being said, right now, a number, most of our communities in Massachusetts are saving much closer to 30% on their electricity bills, given that the electricity rates in Massachusetts have already jumped, like we are going to see. It's already happened there and we had locked in lower rates years in advance at this point. So to be clear, there's a little bit of luck in that for me to say that because when we locked in prices two years ago, I didn't know that there was going to be a pandemic and a war in Ukraine and prices jumping 300%. But that is what happened and we had locked in those rates and our communities are seeing that benefit of it over time.
How would that work in a new site like this? Because I can't recall it. I know you were here before. I can't recall the exact details, but the fact that we're getting into it saying now, I mean, is it already going to be like, yeah, if it keeps going up, we're going to save money. But is it like, we're not going to get that 30% savings because that was a negotiated rate from that people were already locked into.
Yes, that, that's absolutely correct. And so the, the, I think the best way to answer that is that, I'm trying to, I don't want to go too far into the details. Is that the way, I almost said national grid, the way Rhode Island Energy purchases electricity is that over a period of time, they buy a percentage of the demand at one point and then three months later they buy another percentage of the demand and then three months later by another percent. So they, they hedge so that right now, when the prices ramp up, it ramps up slower because they've got these low prices from before. But then when prices go down, our rate's going to go down slower than the market rate because we have high purchases from before. So we want to take the learning that there comes from that type of procurement strategy and work with the supplier to actually model what Last Resort Service does right now in order to, to absorb price increases, but also have more flexibility than what the utility does so that when we see a decreasing market, we're actually able to lock in future rates now. If that makes, if that makes sense, if I had like a whiteboard, I would kind of like draw that out, but.
Sort of does, but I mean, the other part of it is, I believe renewable energy costs more currently than, you know, fossil fuel, correct?
Yes.
So, you know, so is the point here that you're going to save even if it's only like three to 5%, let's say, but you're using more renewables? Is that really the point? And it's really not about the savings as much as it's about the environment? Or is it, there's actually going to be like a real true savings that people who, you know, like, I mean, let's be honest, if you keep your home with oil, my last oil thing in May was 565 a gallon.
I'm sorry.
Hoping it's not going to be like that come October. Is this, is, I mean, do you really foresee in this climate lots of like potential savings? Doesn't have to be lots of savings, but like that 3% to 5%?
Yes, I do. And the reason why is that the, the biggest advantage that we would have in this market going into this is lowering the risk to the suppliers that are actually buying the electricity. The, the supplier, the electricity suppliers that we would negotiate with, they buy it from generators and then they deliver it through Rhode Island Energy's poles and wires to the consumer. And so through the, through this program, those suppliers right now, when they bid on Last Resort Service, a number of them, it's the same market, this is obviously their business, they put in a risk premium right now because they're, at this moment, they might be saying, I will provide 20% of electricity two years from now. So I have to give you a rate that you get to take to the bank for something that's going to happen two years from now. So they build in a risk premium. They say, I don't really know what it's going to be then. I'm buying on a futures market. And so when we get to that point, I might be underwater or I might be making money. But what they do is they charge all of us a risk premium so that if they are underwater, they know where they're making it up is because we all agreed to pay, well, we didn't specifically agree to pay that price. Rhode Island Energy agreed on our behalf to accept that price. What this does is it removes that risk premium. Because what we'll be doing is working with a single supplier in order to meet the needs of our electricity demand over time. And it allows them to say, we know we're going to, we know the amount that's going to be needed because we're the only supplier for the town. So we know how much the use is, we, sorry. And we know how much demand, we know how much demand there is, so we know how much supply is going to be there. And then working with the town over time will know what that increase is like. Does it go up a lot in the summer or does it only go up a little bit in the summer? What's our electricity or electricity demand? And so what they're able to do is better forecast what the demand is going to be. And that means they don't need a risk premium to be added to it in order to, in order for them to make their money, which is what the suppliers are there for.
One other quick question. And that is, is this the one, I mean, I'm trying to remember back and I honestly can't remember the detail, but is this where we need to get in with another group of people that are going to go and negotiate the prices? Like, it's like whoever's in there already and we come and say like, we've got two more town, like you guys, like two more towns that now we have spreading it over a bigger pool? Or is it like, okay, here is these seven, they're already in. And now we're like working on these four or five other communities and then they'll be negotiated, then you're going to go to another cohort.
So the way that I expect it to work and is that the, the seven communities right now are currently in active negotiations as a supplier. So I apologize, there would be a ton of details I would love to say about those programs. But until the agreement signed and the bids are completed, I'm, I have to keep that confidential to, for other clients. But the way that we expect that to work is that while your initial rate period might be different than that current group because they would already be on contract, it might have been negotiated. The initial rate period will be different, but then will be folded into the subsequent rate periods so that it will all be together in the, in the further, in the subsequent rate periods. And what I mean by that is like, we might example have a five month, for the first five months of the program, we're at a different rate than the rest of the folks that are in it because we bought at a different time. But then after that five month introductory period, if you will, we'd be then into one year terms where we would be buying with the rest of the, or the rest of the cities and towns that are working in the program.
So if it was 50% of the cities and towns, would it be a larger pool of people and that prices continue to go down?
That's the idea. The greater our buying power, then the lower, lower prices we're able to command.
Thank you.
The aggregate buying power stronger, right? So the more communities that join, we have more, we have more bargaining capacity to, to go back to that.
Yeah, to the supplier base. To the supplier and then the supplier, the supplier that would be working with who's negotiating with generators would say, I know two years from now that I have these 300,000 accounts in Rhode Island. They're signed up with us. We want you, you are now knowing that you're going to sell that electricity to us. There's no risk for them. There's no fluctuation. They know who they're selling it to. And so every time we provide certainty within the market, we reduce overall costs. As opposed to what we have now where there is uncertainty in the market and that's where suppliers charge extra in order to compensate for that.
Yeah. I think we owe it to our, our, our residents in town to take a deeper dive since electric price is going to be going up 47 to 50% this fall. For me, I mean, seven Rhode Island cities and towns have joined, so the aggregate power is getting stronger. I think when you came in front of us, we were going to be near, we were going.
You would have been the fourth, fourth or fifth.
Fifth one on. So it's definitely growing or going in the right directions. There's no penalty or fees for the program ever, ever. It sounds like, it sounds like we can opt in and opt out. Even if that plan, if we decide to take the next step and we go with the plan and the plan comes back and it's not in Bristol's favor. No, no problem, but we've at least, we, we at least looked at it. But hopefully, hopefully that's not true. Hopefully it's a good deal.
Exactly. And should walk through those, those steps of right now, the request is the council has to authorize the development of a plan. We would not, we wouldn't do it unless you say, well, we're interested in seeing what that plan is. How does the program work? Who's responsible for what? What does the bidding look like? What do you, what's the education outreach program going to look like? We would put that plan together and bring it back to you. That plan, at that point, you all can change the plan, amend the plan, dismiss the plan and say, we actually don't want to do this anymore or accept the plan. If the plan is accepted, we would then move to the Public Utilities Commission who reviews all the plans a second time for consistency with the state law and whatever else it is that the commissioners there might be looking for. And at that point, once they get approval, we'd be able to come back to you and say, okay, the plan's been approved at the council, the plan's been approved by the Public Utilities Commission. We're going to ask you, under what conditions, you would be willing to sign an agreement with a supplier? And so for example, the seven communities that we mentioned before have all passed a subsequent resolution saying, you may sign an agreement with the supplier if one, the price at launch is going to be lower than Last Resort Service. We have to have that guarantee at the moment we sign this agreement. Maybe we don't actually know the rate, but we know that this, you, what you will offer will be lower than that rate. And then the second piece is that the solicitor signed off that the contract actually reflects what those commitments are. And so while I can't go into exactly how the suppliers that we're working with accomplish that lower rate because the contract's not public at this point, that is a commitment that each one of the, the supplier who's going to supply has to make prior to actually launching the program. And then only after that resolution has been passed by the council saying, okay, you may actually go out and select a supplier under our guidance, would we actually, would we then present a contract back to the community to say, here's a supplier that we can work with that meets the guidance that you have given us? And at every step up until that point, once again, the town at any point can say, we no longer want to do this. And there's no fee, there's no cost, there's no associated anything except our time and the value that we put on that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, definitely if electricity bills are going to be going up, fossil fuels are going to be going up. I definitely think renewable energy is a good source for future generations and the sustainability of our, our environment as well as saving the residents of Bristol some money. So I'm definitely for it. Chief, I know you had some questions when, last time we were here. Did, were they all addressed? I know the town administrator had some. I just want to make sure those were all satisfied because I know you come with a lot of expertise in this area.
Yes, just to give a, a little background, as your chief of police, prior to coming to the town of Bristol in 2019, I served for a full decade as I left as the administrator, the director of the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers, which is the sister agency to the Public Utilities Commission, same building. We're an indispensable party on all commission docket. So I'm also a graduate of the NARU Rate School and have my graduate degree in, in those studies as well as criminal justice background. It's a very complex issue. I can tell you that Mr. Rhodes in his company did yeoman's work in front of the commission. I raised several issues as the Division of Public Utilities and Carriers did because the municipal aggregation programs had an opportunity to impact low income rate, rate payers. Such that the statutory language, if someone is behind on their bill, that they could go to the Public Utilities Commission and ask to be put on what we call the arerage management plan. Which means if you stay current on your bill and you go into a budget billing and you sit down with them and you go over usage, that you can have the arerage forgiven. I can tell you between gas and electric customers, there's about $25 million in the state of Rhode Island customers that, that are in the arrears and that is all blended, you know, into the rate making, rate making principles. But to Mr. Rhodes's, Rhodes's credit, I addressed issues with budget billing. Budget billing was also not allowed by the municipal aggregation. They address those particular issues and the A60 rate. A60 rate is a low income rate. There's two parts to the bill. When you say that the bill is going up 47%, there's two parts. There's your commodity side, which is your energy and the other side is your distribution side. That's national grid or Rhode Island energy, your poles, your crews, your staffing. So only half of the bill is going up 47%. Picture that like the gas that's going in the car. The car price isn't going up, the gas is going up, it's going into the car. So I can tell you that I am a proponent of renewable energy. I have a hybrid vehicle on order. I don't know when it's ever going to be made, so I don't want to sound critical to renewable energy. But I'll give Mary credit. We, we could bring her in as a rate analyst tomorrow at the Public Utilities Commission because she's spot on with some of her questions. When I say that renewable energy, for instance, the deep water wind project, the pilot project where the windmills are out over Block Island, that one project is $600 million above market cost. So if the state never put those windmills in the ocean, US rate payers would not pay $600 million more for that power purchase agreement, that, that 20-year power purchase agreement. Renewables are unfold. We report every year to the General Assembly that it is millions and I mean in the hundreds of millions more for renewable. Over time, the economies of scale, costs will be lower, projects will expand. But if you go to ISO New England, we're about 4% of renewable portfolio that exists today. We're still very reliant on fossil fuel in the New England area. The problem is, is there's not a lot of people, there's not a lot of suppliers out there. We have pipeline constraint. We don't want to expand pipeline because it's too controversial. Nobody wants to expand fossil fuels. And there's arguments on, 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 on every side. But we're still heavily reliant on nuclear and, and, and natural gas, coal and oil to heat our homes and for the electricity that we enjoy today. But I want to give you a hu, a lot of credit for going back and addressing the low income issues your company did for everybody, you know, in, in the state of Rhode Island because it's extremely important that vulnerable people think that they're going to get into a discount and then they're not going to have all of those features that other people would have. I did speak, I think that is all in docket 5042 with, with, with the commission. It was all addressed in the Central Falls docket, all of those nuances that we raised. And, and I, again, I applaud you for doing that. But the, I, I did speak with them and the other communities are yet to go through the commission for, the commission hasn't approved the pricing for those other, other communities. So when I was asked last time, you know, at the end of the day, the proof's in the pudding, you know, can we save more money if you go to municipal aggregation? The hard thing for this company is going to be is that, and you, you, I noticed that you guys are, you intervene or you're looking for intervenor status on the standard offer. Because the governor and the commission generally, when they get into these high price spikes like this, we're going into a six-month period that'll end in September. It's about 710 now, kilowatt an hour for energy. So at the end of September, when that six-month cycle ends, you go into a new six-month cycle. That's the most expensive because we're now heating our homes in the winter and where in the summer times, we're not and there's more, there's additional capacity. It's cheaper in the summertime because we're only using electricity for general things that we're doing in air conditioning. But when, when you bring in the heat, we run out of capacity, up goes the price. So what the commission is slated to do with some money that the governor is bringing in, they're really going to skew rate making principles. So it makes it hard for competitive. So it makes it hard for competitive people to get into the market, because they're going to take that six months out, they're going to borrow. Six months ahead when it's cheaper and do a blend to hopefully bring down that particular cost. So in essence, you have an artificial rate, which makes it very difficult for third party suppliers to compete. It's very complex, i- it's very hard for laypeople, trust me, it took me ten years to understand all, all of that. I would, many nights went home scratching my head when we had a rate case. But I think you would have to learn to see if there were savings for the other seven communities that are already out there i- in the, in the pipeline. And that there is potential to do that. I can tell you, if you do want to buy renewables, you can go on the PUC website, I designed a site called Empower RI. You can go into competitive supply as an individual residential customer now. So if your, if your choice is you want to buy more renewables, I can tell you it's going to be more than, than National Grid's pricing. National Grid traditionally, we did a study when I was there, did a decent job of beating the suppliers over time. And a lot of that had to do with when the people came into the market, it's all timing, you know, it, it, it's, a lot of it has to do with timing. Mara Healy is the Attorney General of Massachusetts, she brought them all into court. People in Massachusetts, now I'm not saying his company, I'm not saying municipal aggregation, individual suppliers. Residential people have lost money in the state of Rhode Island that have gotten into third party supply. National Grid and the Public Utilities Commission, the division, we sit with them, we make them buy two years out. We make them buy one year out, we make them hedge, as Mr. Rhodes said, we make them go three. And the big problem right now is spot market buying. So a large part of why it's going up is because we're reliant now on spot marketing. We can't get those long contracts anymore to build that proper portfolio. It, it's complex business, and if there's savings in it for the residents. I, I've been watching as this is going on, on, on the PUC website, to see what the Central Falls, the Providence, the South Kingston, the Barrington. But there hasn't been any release of any prices, pricing yet, so.
Well, you said that they're in the process of, you know, they're negotiating some of those contracts, right? So there's not, they haven't actually been approved, so they're not, it's, so how long? If we wanted to look and say, well, let's see if they save any money, how far down the road would that be? It could be like a couple of years at least then, right? Because when do you anticipate this going through the process and getting approval that they would be doing this?
So the, the, the communities that are approved right now have done everything they need to regulatorily to sign the agreement with the supplier. That agreement will then set when is the launch date as well as the launch price, what's that price going to be offered? Or if the price isn't known now, because perhaps it dates further in the future, how are we going to get to that price? Like, what's the procurement strategy to do that? So that'll be in the agreement itself. Given the, the notification requirements, that if I signed a, if our client signed a contract today. It would still take at least three months to launch the program, because we have responsibility both to get the data from, from Rhode Island Energy. Do our education outreach and opt out campaign to make sure everybody has an opportunity to get out of the program before it starts. And then there's the enrollment period of actually transferring the accounts from Rhode Island Energy to the new supplier. So all of that takes a minimum of three months, I wouldn't do it for less than five. Mostly because I want enough time to do our outreach and ed, and education work. And so we wouldn't be launching that pro, those programs that they signed today, we wouldn't be launching until early next year. So what, that our expectation then is early next year at some point is when the programs will launch. Though the information around what the rate is going to be offered there will likely be known around the same time as National Rhode Island Energy's rate at the same period. Sorry, I'm, it's going to be a hard time for me to change that name. Yes, and so what I, I mean, one of the things I would say is that if, if we waited, and this is, I, I don't want to pressure you all to, to move this forward. So this is, I want to couch what I'm about to say that, is that if we waited to pass a resolution to develop a plan until we knew that there's that savings. Then it would still take us at least nine months to get to the point where you could join the program. The aggregation program of the other communities, because as I walked through before, the process of developing the plan, public hearings locally, the PUC review process. And then the negotiation with the supplier, that all takes time. And so if we wanted to be in a position that when those programs are, demonstrate that they can, that they will save money, I feel confident about that, I wouldn't be in front of you if I didn't. Then we can move forward with this process now, so that if that proves to be true, if our predictions prove to be true, then you can be ready to go out to bid at that point. And if not, then once again, you're not committed to proceeding.
So can you just remind me, because I know we've had this discussion, and sometimes we've had other discussions about, you know, other energy projects. Can you remind us, like, what happened? Was it COVID? Like, how come we haven't pursued it further? Or was it just left? I mean, I just don't remember.
Yeah, I want to say it was last May, I, I say tentatively, because it might have been June, when I was before you.
May fifth.
May fifth, thank you. And the way it was left was, we'd like to see how, what proceeds with the other communities, where they move in the process. And as the chief mentioned, we want to resolve the question for low income rate payers. And I said, great, I'll ask for a year, and then I will come back. And it's been a year, and before I came back, I said, we decided to move to the Conservation Commission and say, can we have some citizens also vet this? Folks that you all have entrusted in their role to vet it first before coming back to you. So I waited until we got progress there. There's a number of other items that we were able to address, along with the issue for low income rate payers, including more transparency and annual. Energy source disclosure labels, so more transparency to individual customers of where their electricity is going to be. A tariff with the utility to make sure the data exchange is happening safely and protecting customer privacy. As well as working with the PUC around their process for review and approval of these plans. The first ones took about eight months to do, and the most recent plan with Narragansett took about six to eight weeks to do. So it was to go, working with the PUC the first time, the first time they've seen something, took time, a number of technical sessions as well as data responses. And now the programs are moving through the PUC much faster. So over the last year, we sought to make progress in preparing the market to adapt to an aggregate aggregation programs. As well as, we weren't able to move out to bid with these, with our other communities, until we saw the low income piece that the chief raised. We asked all of our clients to say, we want you to hold tight, we're not going to go out to bid until this question is resolved. And it wasn't resolved until February, it was approved by the PUC, the, the, the policy change. And then it was implemented by National Grid within about sixty days after.
So how many?
Yeah, I'd like to give everybody else an opportunity. Yeah, go ahead, but I want to make sure everybody else takes.
I mean, how many communities are currently in the hopper right now? Like waiting, like, you know, this Bristol comment.
Uh, so right now, there's the seven approved by the Public Utilities Commission. And then I have been in these types of conversations in North Kingstown and Bristol are where they're most active at the moment.
Well, Jamie, Tony, thanks guys for taking the time to come out here and, and talk to us about this. Jamie, thanks for coming again to talk about this. I personally like to move forward on this, I think back in May, I did a lot of research on it. I thought it was a pretty good deal, it didn't feel like at the time, a lot of others wanted to move forward on it yet. Because there were the additional questions that had to be asked. But there were certain things that I heard from some of the communities in Massachusetts that suggested to me that. This could be a positive thing, not just because of the rates that we'd be paying, but also because of some of the incidental benefits of doing something like this. Besides the environmental benefits and, and everything like that. But one of the community members, she was a planner, Betsy Ware, her name was. You, you might know her, or I think it's your colleague who does the Massachusetts cities and knows Betsy. But she, first of all, said that you guys were excellent to work with. And then the other thing, the other story that she told me was that there had been some seniors that had got in. You know, there was some snake oil that was sold to them, they got into these bad contracts with third party retailers. And once the town adopted the municipal, or not the municipal aggregation, the community choice aggregation. What ended up happening was, they were able to get some of those seniors or the people that had been schemed into some of the third party contracts. They were able to get them off of that, and it was kind of a way for those third party retailers to back off a little bit. And kind of ease their, you know, whatever their, you know. They have these contracts, right? And they were holding them to the contracts. And so when, when the town stepped in, they were able to get them off some of, some of those contracts. So I think also, the last time we considered this, we were in a completely different economic environment at the time. Right now, we're dealing with all kinds of rising energy costs, we're dealing with inflationary pressures that are really affecting everybody across the spectrum. We have residents that are living on fixed incomes, we have residents that are picking up extra shifts at the restaurant or the bar, just trying to make ends meet. And I think what we ought to do here is to do our due diligence and see what kind of rate that we can get. Because I feel that if we don't do our due diligence, and then all of a sudden, we have Barrington, we have South Kingston, we have Narragansett, we have Central Falls, we have Providence. All of a sudden, their energy bills in those communities are lower, we're going to have residents over here asking us what in the heck we're doing. Sitting up here on the dais, not exploring this type of issue. And so I personally feel like we owe it to the rate payers to see what kind of deal that we can get. And if it isn't the deal that we think that we should get, or that we owe it to our residents to get. Then I don't think we should move forward with it. I think that that's the way that we should approach this.
Mr. Trump, thank you. I, I appreciate the fact that you've been making reference to the Massachusetts. I've heard Massachusetts over and over, but yet, when I'm looking at Rhode Island, we have thirty nine municipalities. Only seven have opted in at this point. So that, that raises a bit of a concern on my end, you know, as to why not more municipalities from Rhode Island have jumped into this? If in fact, this is a good sell. That's one. Two, I'm not so sure we should be in the business of negotiating on behalf of our residents. We just experienced ourselves here as a municipality, what happened with the state passing down cannabis to us to put on a referendum now. Do we want to do this to our residents? You know, put them in a position where they have to opt out? And furthermore, if we really have a good pulse, a finger in the pulse of our community, I can see many of the folks in this community struggling. With the fact of opt out, opt in, what's this all about? They love their bill, their constant bill that they receive on a monthly basis from National Grid, well, Rhode Island Energy now. You know, and as it's pointed out, you know, if someone feels like they can get a better deal, they certainly can go on the market and, and do that. But I am very concerned about that, you know, for us to negotiate something on behalf of our residents. And put something into their lap that they're going to have to, if they can only figure it out. You know, as I heard the chief, he says, for laypeople, this is a very difficult and complex process. If it is for some folks who have knowledge of the process and we struggle, how would it be for many of the residents in this community? So I am very concerned for us to step up and negotiate something on behalf of our residents and our community. And if we feel that way, let's put it out to a referendum and ask, you know, will they willing to accept this? We'll negotiate it, put it on, as a referendum, since it's, I mean, after all, we have twenty three thousand residents. You know, let's not a few of us make that decision, you know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, just to respond, and I, I absolutely appreciate the concerns that you've raised. I mean, I, I try not to diminish the decision that's being asked of you to do this on behalf of the town. So I, I recognize the obligation that you have in front of you, and I appreciate the way that you're, that you're coming towards it. So to, to come to the questions that you raised about more communities, the answer to that is, I'm one person. And it takes a lot of time to go in front of each one of the municipalities. And so our intention, I'll tell you what, just our strategy for doing this was, is that in the beginning, our goal was to find the communities that were, that had either previous knowledge, interest in doing this. Like, for example, when, before I ever came to you, Central Falls had already passed a resolution before I was ever involved with this, saying, we want to move forward with an aggregation plan. Providence put it into their climate justice plan before we ever were involved in Rhode Island. So our intention was, let's find the first movers in this. And then, as it took us two and a half to three years to do all these regulatory things, in order for us to then come to the rest of the community and say, great, it's ready for you now. And so what we did in the beginning was, let's do that. And what we found was essentially six to seven communities that said, we want to be the first to go, to go down this path. And so now we're there, and we've gotten the market ready, we expect these first contracts to be signed. So I think you'll find in twenty twenty three, when the programs prove to be effective, I will be going to the rest of the communities and say, here we're at. I know a lot of communities, we sent mail, had initial phone calls, like, we're interested, we want to know more, we want to wait. And for those, I didn't say, I, I didn't ask them to become first actors, because the, the, there was a barrier to that action. We're kind of past that now, and I expect in twenty twenty three, that once we have the programs up and running, that, that those conversations will happen in the other communities across the state. The other piece you brought up about people being comfortable, comfortable with their bill. One of the things that, as a chief mentioned, the way that we were able to address the low income piece is through what's called purchase of receivables. And one of the things that allows us to do is that, nobody's bill changes. Everyone receives, they will still get a bill from Rhode Island Energy, National Grid, they'll still get a bill from Rhode Island Energy. They will still pay Rhode Island Energy for their costs, there's no separate billing, there's nothing new for that individual to do. What will change is that if, if I had a bill right here, you see there's, as the chief mentioned, there's the delivery services and those charges and the supply services. The only thing that's going to change on that bill is the name of the supplier and the cost of the supply services. All the payment methods are still the same, which is what protects folks from the, the, or in the arerage management plan or the budget billing plans, is that we don't change the billing methods. All of it's still done through Rhode Island Energy. The other thing that was brought up was about the, the, the risk, or actually, one of the things that the chief brought up was the risk in the, in the competitive market, that folks have lost money. Going to third party suppliers versus staying with the utility. That is absolutely true, there's no, there's no doubt about it. And one of the things that the Attorney General in Massachusetts did, the Mara Healy, is that she did a report. And I think this was published last year about the difference in prices, not prices, the difference in costs to folks that are in competitive supply. On municipal aggregation programs and then utility service. And what was found, and this, this information is at the Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission, it was filed in a number of cases here. Is that those that were on, just the individually went to competitive suppliers, lost money. For folks that went to competitive suppliers through aggregations, saved money. And the numbers over a four year rolling period was about seven, seven point eight percent for aggregation programs is what was saved over the course of four years. And so the competitive market is what that report concludes, is that the competitive market is really only available to individual consumers, because we use this much. Is if we band together and purchase together. If we try to do this on our own, the market is designed for us to fail. And the suppliers have no interest in solving it for us. The only way that we're able to do that is to come back to them and say, we're going to buy in bulk, we're going to buy as an aggregate. And that way, you actually engage in negotiations on the price. The last piece I just wanted to bring up from what you, what you mentioned there, is about how do people have knowledge about this? Yes, this is a complicated field. So one of the things that, why, why we've been successful at this is we seek to break this down for individuals, both in direct communications through direct mail, through website advertising. And through individual presentations and conversations about what is this and how does it work? And most importantly is that the mail, that before, for somebody to opt out, what will explicitly put in front of them is that, if you do nothing, this will be your rate. If you choose to stay with utility, this will be your rate. If you choose an optional product, this is your rate, this is your rate. Very clearly articulated, what is that rate? What goes into that rate? How much, like, as in how much renewable energy does it cover? And we get it right in front of people to say, these are your choices. If it's just about cost to you, here are the costs laid out, right in front of you. If you don't, if you want to opt out of this program, here's a fully paid, self-addressed postcard, sign it, send it back, you're out. Here's a website, you can, you can put your name on and you can be out. Here's a phone number you can call, you can call Rhode Island Energy, you can call our call center, any one of these ways that you can get out. But what we're going to do is put the information right in front of them, before they're ever enrolled in the program, so they can make an informed decision. That's what we bring to the table, that is our job, that is our purpose, and that's why we've seen enrollment in our programs grow from year to year. People don't leave, because one, we're offering a competitive price, and two, we believe in the customer service. That's the whole core part of how this works, is trust both in the local government to make a decision, and trust in us to deliver those communications on your behalf. And so we want to make it simple, we want to break it down and not have, to have somebody have a master's degree in rate making to be able to understand it. But what they can understand is, I know this price, and I know this price. I know what that amount of renewable energy is, I know what that amount of renewable energy is, what do I choose? I can make that choice. And I believe every resident, when they have that information in front of them, has sufficient information to make that decision on their own.
You raised a question that Mara Healy, every, every individual person that kind of went out to the street or went to a third party supplier, they all got caught and overpaid. And ninety nine percent of the times, it was when the contract ended with the supplier. The supplier automatically put them on spot market pricing and added their. The supplier automatically put them on spot market pricing and added their profit onto that. So when the contract ends with the town, say if you have to renegotiate, or you're out, you haven't gotten pricing model back. Will they go back to standard offer with Rhode Island Energy?
Yes.
Or will you put them on spot market in with your fee associated with that?
If our, if the program is terminated, we have a minimum ninety day notice requirement to Rhode Island Energy and the Public Utilities Commission. The program's terminating in ninety days. That could be because the contract has run its course. You all took a vote and said, we want to terminate the program, or any variation of things that might happen in between. We have to give that minimum ninety day notice, so that Rhode Island Energy, if it hasn't procured enough electricity for folks coming back on. Have sufficient time to go out and head, and while it's not as sophisticated, deliver a hedging strategy for the initial and then fold it into future procurement. We would, we, if the program ends, then assume that our agreement with you all is also terminated at that point. And folks would move back to last resort service unless they chose on their own to go out to the competitive market.
Thank you.
So I got a couple of questions.
Of course.
At the beginning of your presentation, you spoke about, the question was asked to you, Massachusetts. And what was the general savings? Your response was five percent for the, over the life of the contract. How long is the contract?
So the contracts that we have signed have gone anywhere from one year to three years up to that point. So it really depends, it's like both market pricing at that time, but as well, and I'll also just say is that. Given this market, suppliers are coming up with some more innovative products for us to consider, which have longer terms. So while what we've done is one to three-year terms, we are having considerations of longer terms if we think that the product makes sense.
So you also said the five percent that she brought up, a great point, and it was on, there's two parts of the bill. Could you help me understand, when is it fifty fifty? So what I mean by that is, is fifty percent of it the cost of energy and fifty percent of it is transmission?
Give or take.
Okay.
Roughly, yes.
So give us an idea, what is five percent savings on the fifty percent? So if you use an average bill, what would a consumer expect to save?
Okay, you threw me for a loop on the average bill part, because I start to go, what is an average bill? But I will say, just to provide clarification, the savings is on the commodity side of it. So would our price to compare when we say savings is to last resort service rates? And they give it a per kilowatt hour for the actual use of electricity. It's not on the distribution side. Because there's no savings on the distribution side. We all pay it no matter who the, who we use. So for example, if you had a hundred dollar, if right now you had a hundred dollar bill, just use a flat number for that. And all you did was change a supplier, then what we would expect you to pay that next month is around ninety five dollars.
So it'd be a five dollars.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you had also mentioned that there was, actually, Mary had asked the question. There was a huge savings at some because of the massive increases in cost. Did the five percent include that huge thirty percent savings? Do you understand my question?
So they.
So if you cut off the highs and the lows, is that five percent still valid?
Yes, I, I, because I'm putting what we're, what Massachusetts is in right now at this price spike. I'm going to set that aside and say, we don't have sufficient information to know, is this the new normal? Is this just a blip in the market? It's kind of like, you throw out your highs and your lows when you're doing the average. And so this is the high that I'm going to throw out, because right now we might be saving thirty percent. But the rates are going to drop in five months in Massachusetts. Will we still be saving that thirty percent? We don't know, because they haven't told us what those rates are going to be yet. I don't know if I quite answered the question for you.
Kind of, I, but I, I think I got the gist of it. Help me with this one. Fast forward a year. I've, I'm a resident, I've signed up to, for the savings that we've talked about. You, to use your example, a hundred dollar bill, I'm saving five dollars a month. A year goes by, how do I know I'm still saving money? So what I mean by that is, you gave a clear, I loved it. If I'm going to sign up for it, I'm a resident, I know what I'm signing up for. How do I know a year from now it's still good?
Can I have a rhetorical question that kind of answers it? And I, I don't like this. But it's like, how do we learn about your electricity rates now? And it is, we hear about it through the media, we hear about it when Rhode Island Energy makes an announcement or public, or a political official makes. It's like, how do you learn what the electricity rates are going to be now? None of us get a direct mail, we don't get a phone call about it. We're reliant on media of some sort to report what those rates are going to be. That is still how we would know in the future, because while our rate might not be changing. The rate that we're comparing to keeps constantly changing. So it's like, do you know what the new national Rhode Island Energy rate is going to be? If yes, you will know if you have a good deal. If you're someone that says, I never know what that rate's going to be, and I don't care. Or I do care, I still never know. I can't tell you, I'm not going to create magic information to compare now.
So I guess my, I, I think it was pretty straightforward, but I'm going to, I think your number was a little bit too low. So let's say it's a two hundred dollar bill.
Okay.
Right? So there's a ten dollar savings a month. If a year goes down, you're down the road, all of a sudden. It's no longer a ten dollar savings, it's a twenty dollar cost. How do I know? And how do I find out? So how do I know that you're, that this program is actually still good, or it isn't good anymore? And what do I do? Can I change back and forth? But most importantly, how do I know?
So the best source of information that we've had in Massachusetts is the program's website. So if you want information about electricity, you would seek out a website that has it. For each individual community, we're going to launch a website that has, what is the rate here? And also includes, what's the rate to compare? If you were to move back to last resort service, what would that rate be? And once again, we're never trying to hide the ball from anybody. They will prominently be displayed next to each other. With a button next, or a box next to it, say, if you'd like to, if you'd like to opt out of the program, the last resort service. Just fill in your information here, click submit, and you can be out of the program in the next month. So the idea is that where people go for that information, we seek to have it there. We expect the Public Utilities Commission to also publish these rates. As part, I don't know if it'll be on the Empower Rhode Island site, part of it, or at the PUC, another part of the PUC. I expect them to publish this, we've given them the information in such a way that they can. I don't know how they're going to do it yet. So a year from now, I would also expect that a government website will say. These are the prices that the aggregation programs are paying. This is the price of last resort service. Go here if you want to switch as well, which could be a live link for anybody that's participating in the program. So if you want to go to a government site to vet the information, it will be there. If you want to go to the program site, it would be there. If you wanted, if national, if you, if Rhode Island Energy is publishing it, then you would get the information from them, and you can compare it to what's on your bill. So I, I don't have like, I don't have a better answer than that, except how else would we disseminate, disseminate the information?
Do the other seven communities that have signed up, did they make it a requirement to have a comparison guide for the residents? At your site? I think that's kind of what you gave to me. So it is a requirement that at any point a resident could say, I'm no longer saving money with this, I'm going to switch back to Rhode Island Energy.
Yeah, it's been included in every one of the aggregation plans, that, that we will, we will create and administer that site on behalf of the community that will provide this information.
Okay.
But can, to Nathan's point, can people go back and forth? Like, once you make a decision to say opt out, you know, I'm not ready for this, I'm going to see how it goes, can you then get into it at a later point?
Yes.
Opt out anytime you want, but you can get out.
At any point.
At any point. Get it in it at any time too, right?
Yes.
Right. So I've checked with the solicitor before this meeting. If this council decided that it wanted to take the next step, we're not spending any money, therefore it doesn't require. We're not going on for a bid, for example, but it's my belief that you sound like a really nice person.
I appreciate that.
But what if there's somebody that lives in Bristol that does, I don't think there is, there might be. Or Warren or Barrington that does this and can actually save the residents thirty dollars. How do we know? And why would, you tell me, tell me why we would commit to your company without sending a request for proposal, no cost, right? And saying, who else is interested in talking to this town about saving our residents money?
Yeah, and there's been three RFP processes in Rhode Island since the aggregation. These programs had to be authorized by the General Assembly, so since that happened, there's been three RFPs for consultants that provide our services. Providence did one, Newport did one, and Middletown most recently did one. I also realized, I failed to mention Middletown before, as far as active communities. They issued an RFP a few months ago that we responded to, and they haven't acted on the RFP yet, so I cross my fingers, I hope to win the gig. So there's three RFPs that have already been out, and part of our commitment, especially with the city of Providence who did the first one. Is our responses to those RFPs, if any reason is not available or public, we will share with anybody at any time to know. If you were to do an RFP, I could give you generally our proposal now, should you so desire. And then the other communities, the other four communities that have proceeded, essentially took notice of those RFPs that have already been done. And they chose not to run their own at that point. And my, my statement that I've told to everybody is that that is completely up to you of how you procure consultant services. If you do an RFP, we will respond. If you don't do an RFP, we're ready to get to work now.
So in the communities in which RFPs were issued. Who else is out there in doing this business in Rhode Island?
So the, there's two different answers to that. So the one other company that responded to the RFPs is a company called Trey Bell, they're out of Ohio. I don't know much more information about them, but they responses. And the other one is that there's another company called Colonial that currently works with the town of North Providence, or the city of North Providence. I do not know where they are at in that process, you can imagine they don't tell me that information. But there is a company Colonial that serves a number of communities in Massachusetts, that's also signed with North Providence to provide the services. They signed that agreement before we moved forward with any of our communities, and they have not actually submitted a plan to the Public Utilities Commission yet. But those are the other two that have been active in some way in Rhode Island.
Okay, and you're saying those, maybe for Providence or perhaps elsewhere, those, those are public, that's public information? That would surprise me, but.
So a fair amount of it has been made public because of, sorry, take a step back. A fair amount of the information has been public because the towns have published the RFP responses to some degree.
Okay.
But then we also made an additional commitment that none of our RFP, our responses RFP, do we have any desire to keep confidential? And so we made an agreement with Providence that if they want to share it, they are free to do so in complete form with any community that asks. Or if they ask us, we're also happy to give it.
So just how many companies are there? You said there's others in Massachusetts. So there are seven that are dealing with you as the consultant, but then there's other, two others in Rhode Island that have another consultant, is that right?
There's one other community that has a consultant in Rhode Island, and there's one other company that has bid on programs, but we're not selected. I don't know how many companies do this work in Massachusetts. I could name three. But I don't know if that's the exclusive, the exhaustive list of, of companies that are doing the work in other states.
So.
Of course, of course.
So when this, so when this was going through the legislature, I don't know when that was, but. Was, was like your company out there and around and promoting this, or did you, you all start up as a result of this concept?
Yeah, so the, I might get the year wrong, it's either twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen that the General Assembly passed. Passed the authorizing legislation to allow communities to do this. Good Energy was not active, I did not work for Good Energy at the time, they were not in Rhode Island. They were working in Massachusetts, obviously, so they had no influence on the statute itself and only entered the market. I got a call from Good Energy based off of our, obviously I work in this field, so it wasn't surprising they gave you a call. It was about nine months after that law passed, they said, are you interested in helping work with us?
So you also the kind of companies that would do like, you know, the net metering and other things with communities?
No, we do not do that work.
You answered a lot of questions.
Are there more?
Probably seventeen thousand.
I suspect it's.
Tony has, but just a very quick one. On the seven municipalities in Rhode Island. Any of them are already active, where the residents are benefiting from this already?
No, not yet.
So none of the seven is active yet?
No, that's what I've said before, is that we had the bid open last year, and we're responding, we're engaged in the contract negotiations with the suppliers.
So we really don't know for many of those seven, how things will play out?
Not yet.
Okay.
So. Just, let's, I think we've had a lot of dialogue about this. I personally, and I'm not sure what my colleagues think, but even though we're not required to by law. I don't know why we wouldn't go out to RFP and see what other, all due respect to you, sir.
Absolutely.
What other opportunities, or sometimes when you go out to RFP, you find out that the, the opportunity in front of us is the best one. But I think it would be irresponsible not to at least ask the question. You've pointed out two already. Maybe there's five more, maybe none of these people respond. I do not know.
I don't know either.
I, Tony mentioned something that I'm actually looking at the minutes from September thirtieth, twenty twenty. When you were first in front of us. And I recall saying the exact same thing. I'm seriously concerned about committing residents to opting in for something. I know we're talking about savings. But I'm, I'm not, I think we're talking about, actually, I don't, that's not a fair statement. It has not been proven yet, and you agree with this, that there is any savings. And you asked us to say, you'll do your math and see if there is savings at, at the end of your math. If there isn't, in fact, Tony, you said it, then, then don't, why would you do such a thing? So there's some due diligence that needs to be done here. So, so step one, in my opinion, RFP. Step two is whatever that comes back, do some more research on this. If, I think you've talked about an education plan, whoever we end up with, if, if we go this way.
Yeah.
An education plan is infinitely important. I think that we make a lot of decisions for the people of Bristol. We were elected to do just that. This is not one of them. So I don't think that we should turn our nose to this opportunity, an opportunity, not necessarily an opportunity yet. But I can't stress this enough of how important it is that we are not just reaching out and putting an ad in the paper. This has got to be beyond what we normally do, ten times more, because this is completely out of our wheelhouse. It doesn't mean we shouldn't at least talk about it, but anything we do, if we're going to commit a resident. If, I, I live in Bristol, I don't know if you know that or not, right? If I wasn't elected, and my elected official changed my, and I use this example before, I'm looking at it. Changed my cell service to AT&amp;T. How dare you? How dare you? That's mine, I made that decision. It's a kind of bad example, because we're talking about quality of service. We're talking about electricity here, I can't tell the difference when I turn it on and off. If you told me, I got to tell you, five bucks isn't going to make a change. And quite honestly, I don't even know if you're actually going to save any money there. But if I can save money by doing nothing, if it doesn't change my quality of service. If two o'clock in the morning, it's snowing outside, and it's, the service is still going to be addressed if there's an issue. I'm not getting lesser quality service. I don't know why I wouldn't do it, I guess.
Right.
But I'm going to say this again, we don't normally make this, we never made a decision like this, as far as I know, for a resident. So if we were to take this next step, for me to say, yes, I want to take this next step, would be ten times more than we normally do, twenty times more. To make sure the residents first understood what's being considered. And second, clear, open-eyed, does this make sense to each resident? They make that decision at the end of the day. I don't like opting out. Tony brought up another great example. He talked about the marijuana ordinance. We have a ballot question, that it's requiring the residents to opt out of something. No one can remember a time that's, that's happened. I don't like that. I think if you want to take advantage of something, I think you should raise your hand and say, I want to do it.
But isn't there a way that we could do that? I mean, you know.
Great question.
The question being, sorry, just a.
So instead of opting out, like, we go forward with this, and we think the rates are great. I mean, so there's, so it's like, in school, you call it like a passage consent, like, I'm just going to like. People can opt out if they don't want their kids to participate in something, and so that's a great way to go, because you don't have to like chase all these. You know, parent commission slips around, but why couldn't we make it up, you know, you want to get in it, you go in it. Instead of opting out, like, what is that? I mean, why is it, is because, is that, why does the reason for that? Like, if you think it's such, we all determine it's a great benefit to the community at large. And that, either way, whether it's like a sort of opt-in, opt-out. It's, we think we're going to get sixty percent of the people to go forward, then what difference does it make that we're doing it? Instead of opting out, that you would just opt in?
Because when they negotiate.
Because they have to give them that certain.
Because they walk in with, we've got the town of Bristol, not, we've got twenty seven percent of the town of Bristol.
Or more likely, we'd go out and say, we have an unknown amount of Bristol, because we still have to go knock on all the doors and ask people to sign up. And what the pricing that we get back is going to be reflective of that unknown, meaning it will not be competitive with last resort service. And as an example, opt-in programs have been allowed in this state for over thirty years. Not a single opt, not opt-out, opt-in programs have been available, not a single one has ever launched. Because you cannot get a competitive price, because they don't know what they're buying.
So what is the, so what is the average opting out for a community?
Yeah, our, in Massachusetts, our, our average is about fifteen percent of eligible customers opt out.
That high on the.
Yeah, and, and that's a sign, to me, that's a sign of, we reached them. We actually communicated with them, and they made the decision, I don't want to be part of this program. And they made the decision, I don't want to be part of this program, which is a perfectly, no skin off my back. If you don't want to be in the program, please do not be in the program. But it meant that that number of them saw this and said, well, maybe I should go choose something on my own and went to choose on their own or say, I really like being with National Grid. I'm going to stay with National Grid. But it meant that the communication was effective such that they have able to exercise their opt out. And then what we've seen is that over the, by the time we renew that first contract, our participation rates have grown. They've gone from that eighty five percent up closer to the ninety percent. Once again, because if there's a better deal in town, why wouldn't I go and select a supplier with less, that costs me less? And there's no cost for me to join the program. So that's how we make it easy in that way for somebody to, in the end, opt in. But right now, if we were to go out to bid with the opt out program, the supplier knows, all right, we're looking at eight, about eighty five percent because that's consistently what we see our programs do and we will expect to be buying for about eighty five percent of the eligible customers.
So if we take the next step, and Tim, I apologize for interrupting. If we take the next step with an RFP, then I, I don't, there's nothing wrong with taking, in my head of taking the next step, we're not committing. But, and we also have no idea what we're looking at at the moment. So if we go through these steps, let's, let's say you're the only respondent to the RFP. We look at this, we want to take the next step, we still haven't committed anybody to anything. The only thing we're committing to by taking next steps is finding out what the savings are.
To take one step back.
Exactly.
What you will do at that point is say, give us a plan that tells us how we're going to get to that point. And so if, if you were to, you do the RP process, which absolutely, we're going to participate, you will get a response from us. That's the only guarantee I can give you. And then what we'll do is we're going to bring you back a plan that says, here's how we're going to move forward. Here's what the education and outreach effort is going to look like. Here's where we're going to be in communication, the newspaper, the community groups we'll be talking to. The presentations that we expect to make and the resources we'll put in the library. And then you'll say, can you do ABC more? And we'll be like, yes. Amend the plan right now, put it in there. And then the rest of the program will be about, how do we select a supplier? What are the conditions on which the program will launch? Who's in, who's managing the program within the town? Who's managing the relationship with the consultant? That's what the plan would, would, would describe first. And before we even get to pricing, we want you all to be comfortable, that plan is workable.
So Jamie, we know that you don't have to go through everything. One question. We are committing when we know the price, not committing and then getting a price, correct?
What we will.
You hesitated, Jamie. You made me very uncomfortable.
Well, I, I hesitated only because when a supplier responds to a bid, I don't know what that response is going to say. Is it going to say, we're going to march, we're going to launch in May twenty twenty four with a rate of this? Or is it going to be, we want to launch in November of twenty twenty four and we want twelve months of purchasing the electricity in advance to build you a rate that's going to be low in the last resort service? Both are potentials for what a supplier is going to do. And I can't tell you now what that response to our bid for a supplier is going to say at that moment.
But it's fair to say is we're not committing until we know what we're.
Oh, yes.
So I've never bought a car without knowing how much it was going to cost. Let's put it that way. So yes, I'd like it. It's a hundred thousand. I'm going to pass. So I want to make sure that, so the steps are, I get it. We have to commit before you can get price. I get that part of it in the sense of a overall commitment.
Yes.
But no one is signing the dotted line, particularly our residents.
Right.
Without knowing what the.
Without, without knowing what that's going to, what that structure is going to look like. Yeah. What that saving is going to look like.
Go through the PUC and everything else.
Yes, the PU, sorry. I don't mean to drop.
I think, because I think what the point was, like I was like a little more skeptical. But when you had said, and I think Aaron had said too, I mean, if, if, if we wanted, if we were waiting a year ago, in twenty twenty one, we were waiting to see what the savings were. And still in twenty twenty two, right now, the year's almost, you know, like, you know, three quarters way over. We still don't have that information. And you said that, you know, the earlier hearings were very long, like so PUC has a reputation being like, you know, especially for some of the rate cases could be a really long thing. And you said now the most recent ones are like six to eight weeks. So because they, the learning curve, et cetera. So I would think that the, I would think, so I guess why I would be supportive of this at this point is because if we wait for them to get on board, so say it's another three months, I think you answered me about three months to five months or something like that. Then we're still just starting at that point. At least here, we can get some of that preliminary work done. We can get a better sense of what we want with the plan. And then we can take it from there.
Knowledge is free at this point and non-committal.
Right.
So.
Just time. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, Jamie, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the RFP for the energy aggregate program. I think there's no risk to our residents to take a look at the plan. And I think, you know, I think it's, we're doing our due diligence. Just take a look at the plan, even if we walk away.
I'll second that.
So we had a motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to go forward with an RFP. I don't think we need to recover all that we spoke about already. Discussion.
Due diligence.
I heard no discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I for this is Rhode Island D E M Fish and Wildlife Presentation Leading to the Local Deer Population and the Town's Hunting Ordinance.
I'm on the Zoom call right now. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
Chris, Chris is working on that right now. So you got to hear about electricity and Santa Claus tonight. Now we're going to hear about reindeer. So it's, you have access now, are you sure?
Yes. Getting to the share screen right now.
Well, look at that.
Perfect. Thank you. So my name is Dylan Ferrera. I'm with Rhode Island Division of Fish and Wildlife. I live on two 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 Dillon Lane in Swansea, Massachusetts.
Welcome, Dylan.
Thank you. So I was contacted by local Bristolians to address the deer population issues that they've been seeing in, in the town of Bristol. So just to get everybody up to speed on my role as the deer project leader for the Division of Fish and Wildlife, I manage the Rhode Island deer population. So I'll define goals for the deer population such as reduce human deer conflicts. I'll then set objectives for that goal, such as reducing the deer vehicle collisions. We'll monitor those deer vehicle, deer vehicle collisions. We'll make actions to address those if they need to be addressed. And then we'll evaluate those. So I have this real structured process of how we monitor the deer and how we achieve our goals. So just a little bit of a summary for everybody, whitetail deer. They live all across the US, even down into South America. They live in a variety of habitats from wildlife management areas like Tilling Pass Wildlife Management Area. And then also Papa Squash Point, where a lot of citizens reach out to me with issues. They eat a variety of foods, apples, acorns, sunflowers, corn, basically anything that they can find and they find sweet. They're large, like the males can grow up to two hundred pounds. Females can grow up to a hundred and fifty pounds. And that's on average, they can get larger. They'll live from two to five years old typically. Each year we do see some grow older around eight years old. But it's pretty common to reach two, two to three. In the zoo they can, but not in the wild. And we'll get on some of the reasons why.
The DM probably is one of them. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then for the reproduction part of the deer's life, they'll breed in the fall, October, November. The females have a two hundred day gestation period and then they'll give birth to one to two fawns on average in late May or June. So current problems with deer in Bristol, right now they're above cultural carrying capacity. So what that means is regardless of how many the landscape can support, how many other people in Bristol okay with living with? So I'm not going to talk too much about biological carrying capacity. That is how many the landscape can sustain. How much food is on the land that can sustain a healthy deer population? So deer vehicle collisions. We track these annually for all towns in the state. And that's one of the things I'll get into. So right now they're, in my opinion, higher than they should be. Tick bone diseases such as Lyme disease is a big issue, especially in Bristol where you have Cold State Park. I just saw a Facebook post of someone seeing a thousand ticks, you know, pulling off their deer, off their dog, excuse me. And then property damage. That's one of the things I get the most phone calls about is a homeowner calls me to address their concerns about deer coming into the yard and eating their ornamental plants that cost them quite a few dollars. So for deer vehicle collisions, on average, they can cost around six thousand dollars each time. This chart here is since two thousand and nine and they've been increasing almost annually. And this past year, I think there were thirty nine deer vehicle collisions in the town of Bristol. And this is a map, sorry for that it's small. But this is a map of the state that lists the deer vehicle collisions per square mile. So the lightest colors are going to be the towns with a low level of deer vehicle collisions per square mile. And red is going to be the towns with the most. And Bristol is one of, one of the top five of above three per square mile per year. So as you all know and are familiar with tick bone diseases, there's Lyme disease, which is a big issue in the state and really the Northeast. But according to the DOH, there's around eight hundred and forty cases of Lyme disease in Rhode Island. In Bristol, since two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and eighteen, you're looking at around forty cases a year. I think the CDC, the Rhode Island Department of Health issues this report every four years. So I assume there's going to be one coming. That's why I don't have the most recent data.
And so do you say how many in Bristol again? Forty did you say?
Forty every year is.
Approximately. If you look at the graph, there was twenty in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and seventeen, there were over fifty. And then in two thousand and eighteen, there were just over forty. And another large concern is the Lone Star tick. So this tick is found in Rhode Island. It's found quite frequently on Patient's Island. And this has the ability to give humans Alpha Gal Syndrome. And that allows the human or makes the human allergic to red meat. So beef, you would become allergic to. So property damage is one of the things I get most of my phone calls about from residential homeowners. The top picture, you can see the abreviate is a pretty common scene that most people see around town. That's caused from deer. You have that straight line along the top is because that's as high as they can reach. Anything below that, they can consume. And then same goes for their ornamental plants or gardens. There's not a ton of commercial agriculture in Bristol, but there is some, you can see some of the sunflowers and cornfields, not necessarily in Bristol from these images, but can see a, an impact from deer browse. So why are there issues in Bristol? There's a reduced hunting pressure. The main reason there is a reduced hunting pressure is because Bristol is very populated. So there's not a lot of places where you can actually go hunt. There's a two hundred foot buffer for archery hunters and a five hundred foot buffer for firearm hunters that have to be away from the house. So if you're archery hunting, you have to be at least two hundred feet away from the house to hunt. If you're a firearm hunter, you have to be at least five hundred feet away from the house. There's favorable habitat. There's plenty of food, plenty of water, plenty of shelter. And lack of predators. Now I know there's probably plenty of coyotes around, but they're not a main predator for deer. Every once in a while, they're going to consume some fawns, but they're really not going to take down adult deer at all. So when you have high deer populations, you have some management options. And I'll go through them here. So the most common and most effective is going to be legal regulated hunting. So it's effective and indicated by the green dollar sign is it typically generates money for the town and for the state. So hunters who want to hunt have to buy deer permits and a hunting license to go. So with that money comes to the state and then the state uses that money to obtain federal dollars to conduct wildlife research. And there's over an eighty percent approval of legal regulated hunting. And there's no maintenance by the town, by sharpshooters, by anybody to do the task of legal hunting every year because the hunters are doing it voluntarily. And there's sharpshooting, which is also effective, but it's very expensive. You have to hire somebody to come in here, set up shop and then basically sharpshoot, sharpshoot all the deer around. It can be quite controversial because, because of the method that it uses. And that's something that has to be done annually. There's also fertility control or birth control. In a population like Bristol where you don't have a close population, deer can come and go as they please. It's basically ineffective because you can't control all the deer that you need to. And that's also very expensive. It's not as controversial because it doesn't kill deer. And a lot of people have issues with that. But again, that has to be done annually. So that's a continued, continued cost every year. Translocation, so taking deer, capturing them and then bringing, bringing them outside of the town. It's also ineffective for the same reason about birth, birth control. You have an open population, deer can come and go as they please. So you could take a deer, move it somewhere else. If it's not far enough away, he could come back. Or deer in a nearby town like Warren could come in, or deer could swim across an Arroganza Bay. It's very expensive, usually has public approval and there has to be maintenance annually. It's not something that you can be wanting done. Also, the biggest issue that the department has with it is if there are diseased deer in Bristol, not saying that there are. But then if you were to move a deer that was diseased, you could then translocate that disease to somewhere else. And the biggest concern is chronic wasting disease and that's a deer issue. And then fencing, it can be moderately effective, mostly for the individual homeowner. But you can imagine the cost associated with that for every homeowner across the town. There's usually public approval because it's not killing deer. Sometimes people don't like fencing because they don't like the way it looks. And of course, there's maintenance with that as well. So currently we do have legal regulated hunting in the town. It's mainly archery and there is hunter education required. So this chart here shows the amount of deer that have been harvested by hunters within the state, within the town, sorry. So we're hovering right around fifteen deer per season. We also issue, issue deer damage permits. So if there's a farmer who has a farm and they say they have too many deer, they can apply for a permit. And then Department of Agriculture will issue them the ability to take deer on their own property. And then of course, there's the other options I just mentioned, which are typically costly, time and staff intensive, and then require that annual upkeep. So the two roadblocks to hunting effectiveness in Bristol right now is the no firearm discharge town ordinance. So that doesn't allow the landowner, somebody who owns the property, to have someone come and reduce their deer on their property with a firearm. If you are the owner of the property or you lease it and reside there, you can still do so with a firearm. But a lot of the people who want to see gear removed aren't willing to do that on their own and a hunter could come in and do that for them. Some hunters who hunt, only hunt with firearms because there is a difficulty with using archery equipment. Some people can't use much equipment because they have, you know, a strained shoulder or a bad neck. We do allow for crossbows in the state, but some people just want to use firearms. And also firearms have a higher success rate than archery equipment for obvious reasons. And they're more accurate. You can shoot a further distance. So yeah. In addition, there's few, a few public places to hunt. So in Rhode Island, per state statute, a hunter needs annual written permission to hunt on property for deer. So if there's town property, the hunter would have to go to the town manager or the, maybe this setting here and ask for written permission. So right now that I'm aware of, that doesn't happen on town properties. So I'm just going to go through some maps really fast of what the two hundred foot buffer and then the five hundred foot buffer looked like for archery and firearms. So the one on the left in a light green is that two hundred foot buffer for archery equipment. And the one on the right is a five hundred foot buffer for firearms. So this is the town as a whole. This is on, I believe, Tupelo Street. You can see even with the five hundred foot buffer from all the houses, there would still be places where a hunter could actually hunt safely on this property.
So Dylan, the dark area is available. Is that what you're saying?
The shaded area is unavailable.
Okay.
That's within the five hundred foot radius of a house.
So kind of.
Yeah, just that middle.
Inverted T area, if you will. Okay.
Correct. This is some private property. I believe this property actually does have deer damage permits. But if the owner or the person leasing it who's residing, resides there, doesn't reside there, they can't use firearms. So this would give that person the ability to use firearms. And I believe there's also a small sliver of state or town property to the south. Is another piece near the boat ramp. Another small piece that does have some space available to firearms. This is Mount Hope Farm, I believe. Yes, I think so. This property is probably one of the best properties where firearm hunting could be allowed. To my knowledge, Mount Home Farm doesn't allow hunting right now. But a lot of properties have becoming more applicable to allowing that to happen. The Nature Conservancy is the biggest one right now that was opposed to hunting on their properties. But due to forestry generations issues, they've allowed deer hunters to come in and remove deer in order to have a better forest habitat. This is sort of the middle of town. There's basically nowhere where somebody would be able to firearm hunt. And you can see there's a little sliver just south of Gooding Ave. With something that's small, it's only going to cause issues for that hunter. With something that small, it's only going to cause issues for that hunter because they're probably not going to be within that small area. And that's not something we would advocate for. Is Papa Squash Point and Cold State. This is where we have most of the the complaints coming from homeowners about property damage. I know Cold State is actually a state park and right now there's no hunting there. But I think if the town took a step to address the deer concerns, we might be able to work with state parks to to do something there as well, which is where it seems like most of the issues with ticks come from. And then here is near Roger Williams, some other smaller properties that may have the potential to to use firearms. So my recommendation is to amend the no firearm discharge for legal regulated hunting. So hunters still must abide by that five hundred foot buffer per state statue. And this allows the individual landowner to make that decision. So if they're having a deer problem and they feel that it's safe and they know somebody who can do it responsibly, it allows them to make that decision. And just to put hunting safety into perspective compared to other activities, I'll just read the first one and the last one. You're eleven times more likely to be injured playing volleyball. And you're a hundred and five more times more likely to be injured playing tackle football.
I'm laughing because couple of meetings ago, I walked in with crutches because I hurt myself playing volleyball, so.
So the last incident that took place was two or a group of hunters were hunting illegally. They were using shotguns. They were not wearing their hunter orange as they're required to do, and they were using buckshot. Buckshot is now illegal and you still have to wear orange. So here's the current town ordinance. I won't read it. Sorry. Here's the what I would propose a new town ordinance would look like. In essence, it basically says people who are Ryland licensed can um engage in legal regulated hunting. And then the second recommendation would be to open private properties like town properties to lu- to legal regulated hunting through these cooperative hunting programs. So there are programs nationally that do things like this um in Ohio, New Jersey, and Missouri. We have some already existing here in Rhode Island listed here. Beavertail State Park, the Nature Conservancy Properties, and other land trusts. So they're pretty common. And some properties that I would I think would be suited for a cooperative hunting area would be property off of Tupelo Street, Gooding Ave, uh near the veterans homes, maybe the transfer station. So that doesn't necessarily have to be firearms. If the town or whoever owned the property thought, you know, something firearms isn't good here, but I am okay with archery. You could then require that person to o- only archery hunt. And some of like the nature conservate, they don't allow firearm hunting for deer on their properties. They're archery only. So in conclusion, I'd like to help Bristolians reduce the deer population to fall below cultural carrying capacity. So reducing deer vehicle collisions, reducing tick-borne diseases, and reducing property damage. And we do that through amending the no firearm discharge into open town and private lands to to Leo hunting.
I like to know. That's a tough one. So uh this is interesting. Um I know, uh well, I live on Fessar Ave, which is off Griswold, kind of the Roger Williams area. And we have deer in our front yard all the time. In fact, one of our neighbors down the street, I always wondered why they trimmed their abreviatey that way. And it turns out it was uh the local deer population doing that. So um could you give us an idea of what is a controlled population and how long would it take us to get there? If we followed most, we'll say, of your recommendations.
So I wouldn't call it a controlled population. So that term I use cultural carrying capacity. That just means there are too many deer for what the people are acceptable with. So that level can change through time. So in Bristol, I would imagine it to be a perfect world when there's no deer, no deer vehicle collisions, no tick-borne diseases, and no property damage. Now, I know those three are never going to happen because that's just not reality. So we reach that goal when deer vehicle collisions are lower than we want, lower than they are now, and come to a threshold that myself and the town could come to an agreement like this is a good number. I like to see them below two, close to one, like some of those other towns. Tick-borne diseases. We can look at some other towns and see what numbers make sense for Bristol. So right now we're at forty, twenty would be great, ten would be even better, but we like to set goals. And then for property damage, right now I don't track property damage. Before the before the last phone call I got, where I was like, you know what, I gotta call the people in Bristol and try and have this conversation. I never recorded how many people called me every year. So the property damage one is hard to it sort of uh maintain through time as a metric. But it is something that I could keep track of year in and year out to see how many people are still having issues with deer. So I use those three metrics to tell me if we're hitting the objective that we want to be at.
Okay.
We're we're a very highly populated town, so for me stray bullets and firearms just make me cringe because I'd be very, very nervous. I know I go and back in my whole farm and I've seen a lot of deer back there. But it's loaded with people hiking and walking all the time through the half route for everything else. So you know, firearms going off and something like that just really makes me nervous. So I don't, um how does that? How does that process work? And then I guess I'd like to hear from the chief police to find out like the wh- where we are as far as uh the deer populations, the number of uh crash reports we're getting. Are we in a dire situation? It it will with the arch, maybe the archery staying in place would be sufficient for now.
Yeah, so deer hunting is very safe. Firearms hunting is very safe. I can't think of the last time in Rhode Island where a non-hunter was injured because hunters that go through that are required to go through hunter education are taught that to shoot at your target and what's beyond your char- your target. So if you're aiming at a deer, you're not only looking at the deer, you're supposed to look what's behind your target. So that's why a hunter is doing their due diligence by making sure with they shoot a firearm or even a bow for that matter. They're anticipating if they hit the deer or they don't hit the deer, where is that bullet or arrow going to go? Um a lot of towns that incorporate some of these firearm hunts, they require all of the hunters to be in an elevated tree stand. So most hunters nowadays are using tree stands to become elevated to see better. And that also is a safer method with firearms because then you're shooting down and you don't have that straight bullet um potential.
Can you speak to Tim's earlier question? I was going to ask the same thing in regards to um sharing the space. How do you make sure that obviously, Mon- we'll use Mon Hope Farm as an example. We have no idea if they want to do this or not, but assuming that they were semi-amenable to talking about it. How do you make sure? Is this a time thing? So for example, that this would only be allowed from a certain time in the morning and a certain time in the evening? How's it work?
So right now, sta- on wildlife management areas is open to the public. So there's already multiple use of uh recreation, non-hunting recreation in hun- ongoing at the same time. Um so it already occurs um in peace right now between hunters and non-hunters without accidents. So it does already occur. I'm confident that the hunters that are in the state act responsibly to where the non-hunters don't uh aren't in jeopardy of of injury.
Dylan, thanks for your presentation. I I come from a state where a lot of people do deer hunting, Minnesota. We have a uh kind of a season and everything like that. It's almost like a religion, like people will go out there in October and November, they'll go out with their families, they'll go out there and do deer hunting. But the way that you made it sound today, it sounds like it's open almost year round. I'd say like, it seems like one of the benefits to having like a seasonal deer hunting system is that at least people know that there's hunting that's going on. You can do public service announcements, you know, explaining to people that there's hunting going on and that you should be wearing orange. And you know, and that kind of thing into in in some of those huntingers or to stay away from hunting areas in the first place. Even then, it seems like it would be a lot of work in kind of a place here that doesn't have kind of that, the culture ingrained. Um so I mean.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we do have a hunting season. It's not year round. Right now, it's September fifteenth through the end of January. Um so it is a long season, but it's generally in the fall and the winter when recreation's a little bit lower than the spring and the summer. We always do our press releases annually, letting hunters know and the public know. Um especially when the the firearm season opens. Because that's when most people are concerned about literally getting shot by somebody. It hasn't happened, knock on wood. But yeah, we're always doing press releases every year to make sure the hunters and then the non-hunting public are aware of hunting season and what's going on. Um and properties like this that have never been hunted before, especially with firearms, we always make extra press releases, social media posts, and then we also do additional signage. So at a trailhead where somebody's walked into Mount Hope Farm, you know, there'd be signs that says, you know, hunting season is now open. Five hundred square inches of oranges required, a hat and a vest. And that's basically it.
So would they be, would they be perched like near a pathway? Where, you know, like the road, for example, like down in Mount Hope Farm? Or would they be somewhere way more in like a trail or in the woods?
Good question.
Cover that.
Yeah, so most of the hunters, and this is answering your question, but not. So most of the hunters will hunt where the deer are. So if you go hunt on the side of the road and the deer don't go there, you're not going to be successful. So most of the deer during the day are spending most of their time in the mi- interior of the woods, you know, away from all the you know, ruckus of uh drivers and dog walkers. So most of the hunters will hunt away from roads and away from established trails. Another thing that a lot of um cooperative properties will do is you can't hunt so many feet within an uh a known trail. That way, if a hunter's hunting right on top of a trail, that hiker may get nervous and not want to go and turn around and leave. So some towns or um property owners will say a hundred feet from a from a trail. And that keeps the hunters off the trails. The hiker still would have been safe if they're on the trail, but they feel safe as they're walking through.
Yeah, because I would think that if we if we were to do something like this, you'd want to have like designated areas and you'd want to have, you know, like times, like to me, like I don't know when deer active, like I know they're you know, early morning, late, you know, the dawn and dusk, I think it would be.
Yep, exactly.
You know, I mean, you know, when other people may not be out there or certain days that, you know, no one else goes on the on that in that area. I mean, that's just something that seem like, I don't know if that's work or if that's practical, but that seems like a little nerve-wracking the other way. But I I mean, I know that people go everywhere and do this and it's a big, you know, like people are very committed to like their hunting season and wherever they whether they do it locally or they go to up north or whatever. Um I guess one thing that I that sort of struck me when you were talking about this is that you come up with a plan per community kind of thing. You know, you said we'd work with you. Is to like, what would be those indicators? I mean, aren't there like either state or national indicators of what is you know, the appropriate number of certain types of of, you know, animals and that you'd like, so you know, if you want it, I mean, how many eat, you know, the goal is not to kill every single deer in Bristol, right? So how would you know what the number really is? Like if you said, did you say it was fifteen deer per hunt of the, or did you say fifteen deer a year that get hunted in Bristol? I didn't quite catch that.
Right now, it's just fifteen in Bristol, period.
I mean, so would that be like, you know, thirty? I mean, you know, or is it like, hey, let's go see if we can get two hundred deer killed in Bristol? I mean, I just find that kind of weird. I mean, I don't and I don't think, I I feel like there would be a better kind of national or state standard that state, you know, if you have so much, you know, it could be like, there's probably a whole lot of those areas that you mentioned. There's probably a whole lot more deer up in like the northwest corner of Rhode Island than there is here, but it's a lot more, it's a lot more rural. So you're not seeing it as much on the roads potentially.
Right.
And you said there's like a lot, not a lot, a lot less accidents.
So the reason why there's not sort of like this set level for everybody is because what I'm going by here is that cultural carrying capacity. So it's what every town is acceptable with. Like how comfortable are the Bristolian Bristolians comfortable with? And that's where that deer vehicle collisions, tick this uh tick cases and property damage comes in play. So like the state or national level, I'll just talk about the northeast because we're sort of the same. When we're looking at a level that's really across everybody's, we're looking at deer per square mile. So deer are already over the biological capa- capacity across most of Rhode Island. So I'm not going to go by that because that's not the biggest issue in Bristol right now. The biggest issue with Bristol to me, from what I've been hearing from the residents, is the cultural carrying capacity. The deer vehicle collisions, tick diseases, and uh property damage. So let's say the deer density was a hundred per square mile, which it's probably not. It's probably near fifty. If I reduce that deer density to ten per square mile, but the human deer conflicts stood at the same level, then I didn't achieve the goal. So like that national level or the northeast level is deer density.
But do you know what the density, but do you know what it is per community?
No.
Roughly?
No.
Do you have a way of identifying that number?
So we're working right now to estimate the population across the state right now. But the in the way we do that is through deer harvest. So we take the harvest that hunters obtain. We take that information, we put it into a model, and it spits out how many deer are in the state. Now, if you were to do it at a town level, we don't have enough deer harvested in the town to have enough data to use in that model. That's why we do the entire state. Because we're such a small state like Minnesota, their state's huge. They can do this on like the county basis. We can't even do it at the county basis. So we do it at the state level.
What about um Prudence Island? I mean, you know, obviously, we have our, the ferry right here. That is a big hunting area, if I'm correct.
Right. So because it's such a high hunting area, like you mentioned Borreville, there's a lot of hunting pressure. It typically keeps the deer-human conflicts down because there is that hunting pressure. If I'm going to go back to this map, you'll see a common theme. Almost there, there it is. So you can see in the western part of the state, that's the more rural section. You have less deer vehicle collisions because there's in generally less deer. And there's less deer because there's more hunting pressure. So along the coast, it's more populated, there's less areas for people to hunt, then there's more deer. In general, like that's a like a very general way to look at it. There's always nuances with everybody. Um like Bristol, they have the no town, no town, uh no firearm town ordinance. So that makes it a little bit harder to keep those deer numbers lower.
Dylan, if this council said, let me back up and say we all know somebody either personally or pretty close that has gotten Lyme disease. It is tremendously effective at shutting down a human being. There's so many horrible things that happen. Some people just joint pain and then so many horrible things. So I think we all understand the, I I for myself, that is probably one of my biggest concerns, probably all of ours. Is there a way? How do, how do we not go to the guns? I guess my question is, is that what next step? What what is an intermediary step where we could open up uh opportunity for hunting with bows without going to the guns?
Yeah, for sure.
And I'm not, I want to know what the next steps are. I just don't want to go from a zero to a hundred.
Yeah, for sure. And that's taking the public properties right now. So any town properties or state properties in creating of those cooperative hunting agreements. So what that would look like is, let's just use Tupelo Street for example. That let's say that property is owned by the town, which I think it is or will be soon. We would work with the town to come up with a list of rules and regulations for that property. It could be as simple as follow state regulations. That's what I would recommend to have your highest impact. And then what we would do, instead of the hunters coming to you, the town, and saying, can I have a written permission slip? Because that's what they need for every property they they hunt on. They would then be written in through our regulations that they allowed to access because we have a cooperative agreement. So they don't need to come to the town to sign a paper. So that's the step one. And you could do that with archery only because it's already allowed in the town.
How do, Chief, I'm sure that you can would want to weigh in, but how do we make sure that our police department is aware that this John Smith, Jane Doe, whoever it happens to be, has a hunting license and I mean, if I'm a resident driving by and I see somebody with with a weapon, you know, my first question is, what the hell are you doing, right? And then I'm going to call the police and say, you know, how do we stop that from happening to make sure our police department is aware of, you know, these the potential hunters if we wanted to go down this road?
Yeah, so we have our own um Department of Law Enforcement. So they're out and they're enforcing the rules and regulations that we set forth. So it's the green bullet, green and black trucks, the police officers that are wearing all green. Those are the guys who enforce our rules and regs. So if somebody were to see somebody who looked like a hunter was on a property and were concerned about that, I'm sure they'd probably just go straight to nine one one in Bristol, figure out what's going on. And now we would encourage them to forward those calls over to our dispatch. And then they could handle that situation. And the way that we would determine if that person was hunting legally is we have the online licensing system. The hunter can go into the system, uh the enforcement officer can go right into the system, find the hunter when they have their ID in front of them and tell if they're legally licensed.
Chief, can you weigh in on the the weapons portion of this? Your thoughts on on?
People are going to think I had a lot of jobs, but my first job in in law enforcement was as a D E M enforcement officer.
No kidding?
I actually went to the Police Academy for them, so I have a lot of respect for my my alma mater and um and the chief, uh Hoxey, uh who runs that organization. But one of the things that I picked up on him was he'd have to establish some rules with the town and what Aaron had said, what's the hunting time timeline? So perhaps you know, when you look at the map of Bristol, the the areas are very tight and uh they're very concerned. So, perhaps, you know, when you look at the map of Bristol, the, the areas are very tight and they're very concerning. You know, for me to, like, like yourself, to, to use guns in, in those residential neighborhoods. So, I, I, I possibly could write into the rules and regulations, uh, hunting days rather than a whole entire season. I'm just thinking, you know, quickly off of the cuff. And at which point, you know, a, a shift briefing goes out to all of the officers, we would know, there's an officer on Gooding, there's an officer at the old golf course, there's an officer down. I mean, there's hunters down in, in these particular areas. And I have a lot of respect for DEM enforcement, but like all of us in policing, uh, staffing, it, it is of great concern and concern for them because we're actually filling in for them down at Cold State Park on the weekends because they can't staff it. So, I would, I would like to know the hunting days, the locations, where the hunters are. Um, and I would feel more secure sending the Bristol offices by just to check on everything and, um, to make sure. It could be an event going on at the farm, it could be a pop-up, something's going on and the officers could, you know, could, uh, uh, give heed or warning to anybody that's in the, in those particular areas and just add an extra layer, a layer of safety. We did that when I was with the Cranston Police Department. Uh, we were aware of when the hunting certificates were going and, and we patrol offices would go by and, and just double check that area. Just put an extra set of eyes and ears on it.
What are you talking about?
Cranston, that would be, that be the hunting area then?
Yeah, yes, off of Pippen Orchard Road.
And Chief, you're talking about archery only, right? These, these sort of like?
That certainly would be, be the council's decision, you know. A- again, uh, you're getting into proficiency, you know, with a weapon. Uh, I, I, you know, for, for, for some people, they're very proficient at, at either. So, they're proficient at archery and they're proficient, you know, with a gun. We all hear the, you know, the stigma of, of the gun going off, the noise, the impact, you know, the community's going to hear it. But I would have to say that they're probably equally as safe, um, I'm sure statistically, um, from a hunter's perspective.
I guess for myself, I'd like us to, if, if we can take one step and if we can see some improvements, we're, we're not sure what specific, we know we want to, to lessen the deer population. Simply put, right? And we want to do that because we have, um, tick-borne diseases, we have property damage. So, it seems reasonable what you're requesting. I just would love us to go maybe step by step and let us see if our first step is good. It's just those, those areas, we've used Monhold Farm, let me be, just to be fair to Monhold Farm. Nobody's suggesting that that's their property, my goodness, it's up to them, are we clear? Okay. But if there are other properties that are quite significant, that are privately owned, that, that if the, if that resident wanted to do that?
Yeah, one of the things I credit the Bristol Police Department, and certainly long before I joined and maybe when the town administrator was there, they, you know, earlier tonight, you approved the Christmas festival to have those particular functions. Prior to that function going on, we met with those people and we established the security plan. We know how many offices, how many volunteers, where all of those stations and where everything was going to be located. And it's something that we do for all of our special events. I don't want to get into, you know, intricate public safety things, but it's something, uh, that is, uh, I admire. I, I, I didn't see it when I was with the Cranston Police Department, you know, and, and one of the officers in the back, Lieutenant St. Pierre, he, he's actually the author of, of this, many of the plans. And we go through it all for schools, for everything else like that. So, if you decided the council would decide like that, we have no problem meeting any one of the hunting groups and working on one of our security plans where we, I know I would feel if my people had a look at it, uh, in concert with Dean Hoxey, have a great relationship with the DEM, uh, chief, and, uh, working out a, a plan of action, uh, where we would have those increased patrols, those numbers, those communications that went out, stuff on our website as well, up on, you know, we have a big following on our, our Facebook pages. So, just to educate the community, um, about, you know, what's going on.
How about if we do this, if this, and, and certainly Tony, share your point?
Well, if I may, please, okay. Dylan, uh, where in the other, in the various communities where currently hunting takes place, where did they issued the permits to, for the hunters? Is it through the administrator or through the police department?
So, right now, hunters can buy the hunting license and the deer tags through the online license system that we run through the Division of Fish and Wildlife. So, then there's the special properties, those cooperative properties like the TNCs, the South Kingston Land Trust. Those properties have entered in a cooperative agreement with the state and they don't need to have a, the hunters don't need to have a written, um, signature. Since there's been an agreement between the two, the property owner and the state, we've, we've removed the requirement for the hunter to go talk to the property owner. So, that's sort of how it works right now. There's always the possibility to say, okay, if Bristol town property wanted, uh, hunters to come into the, the chief of police and have the, the chief sign the slip, that's something that, you know, could be possible too. We like to not do that because it puts an extra burden on the town. So, we like to take the burden on myself, because I'll be the one who run in the show. Makes it easier for you guys and, in my opinion, makes it smoother for everybody.
If they come through one of our entities, whether it's the police or the administrator, correct?
No, he's saying go directly.
All go directly through you.
They would, but.
The only thing, I mean, as, as the concerns were already raised, okay. Personally, I don't have a problem that we adopt the ordinances that you're proposing with the understanding that we have all the protocols in place going forward rather than piecemeal it. That, that's just my thought, my opinion. You know, and obviously with signage and the dates, you know, people will be educated and know that it's happening, you know. And obviously, we can designate where are the areas in town that would be allowed to happen.
Yeah, and a lot, and a lot of the properties that we own and manage, we'll go around and we'll post the property, the perimeter of the property and say wildlife management area, state cooperative property. And then we can also post properties that say, there's a five-hundred-foot buffer here. So, that would mean I would take my map, basically, walk the property. And then when I'm inside of the property that you can hunt with a firearm, you would post like here is the five-hundred-foot buffer. So, then the hunter knows they can't go past this in the middle of the woods. It's sort of the line in the woods that's, you know, imaginary that they wouldn't be able to see. Most hunters now are using their smartphones, you know, in the middle of the woods, you pull out your phone, you're a little blue dot on the map, and then you can measure how close you are to a house to stay legal. But we also put those signs up that way, if someone doesn't have a phone and they're just walking through the woods, they'll see the sign and know they can't go further with a firearm or can't go further with archery equipment. But we always like to work with the town to say, if you guys want to have them come in, see the chief and have them sign a slip. And the chief can be like, hey, look, Tupelo is a bad weekend, they're having something going on there, don't go there. That's something that we're happy to work with the town on.
And I think if you don't mind that, I think is like the key part because if, like, let's say after, um, after Veterans Day, like, you know, November eleventh, let's just say that. I don't know how active the D R R and like that November, December timeframe. But outside of like holiday events, which may be going on, but you're not going to be down the most partly, you know, I know we're all using Monhold Farm and it's not really our property, but you're most likely not going to be down at the cabin on the water um, in the middle of November as you might be in the summer and good, you know, the early months of the fall. And so, I would seem to me that, you know, the, the, the communication with the local police department as to what's going on. But I don't really, but I, and I would like to see certain days or certain aspects, like not until after November fifteenth or whatever the case might be. Um, on certain areas, a certain air, you know, I don't know which is, I don't know which is more humane for the deer, like a gunshot or, you know, um, archery. I mean, I think if you're going to do it, I mean, to me, the worst part about the deer unfortunately are the ticks. And that is really, really, like I saw that Facebook about how many ticks that when we tip off a dog and all that. I mean, I do think that, you know, you got to do something and everyone, everybody says these are like sort of barbaric things that you do. This is a way you manage wildlife and otherwise there's not enough habitat, there's not, there's diseases, there's not enough food and so forth and so on. So, I mean, I would be open to either one, but I feel like, I don't know who this is to do it. But I feel like this was something we would normally refer to somebody to come back to us with a plan.
Exactly what you mean.
You know?
Exactly what you mean.
Whether it's you, like you came up with some thoughts, whether it's you in a small committee or with the chief and, and, you know, our, our administrator, like, here's what we're recommending, here's my, my work for Bristol. Maybe you'd phase it in with these couple of larger places for the first year or two. You know, like, I don't know what DEM allows down on, um, down on Cold Park, for example.
And Mary, I was just going to say, I was just thinking about the motion and I was thinking we, it may be best to just refer this to the, the chief of police to,
Maybe to the administrator.
To do, and the, and the administrator do some analysis, look at the troubled areas. Um, and as the chief had stated, uh, look at an action plan and work with the Rhode Island DEM.
Yeah. Yeah, so for, and just to answer your question about dates, right now, the state regulation is September fifteenth through the end of January. And you were saying you're not sure when deer are most active, they are most active in November and December. So, if the, if the town wanted to, it'd be like, I have, if the town was like, not September, not October, but only November, December. For me, as the manager, November and December is better than nothing at all. You know, it's like you're saying, let's take these steps to get to where we need to be. And then in a perfect world, everything is open to everything and then you're still not meeting that objective of reducing deer vehicle collisions, ticks. Then you'll say, okay, we've done everything we can, now what can we do? And that's when you potentially look at those other options.
So, we had a motion from Tim to refer to the administrator, the chief of police and I'm going to say Dylan, but DEM representation from DEM. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, and, and probably the solicitor, I'll let the administrator deal with that. There's a second, is there a discussion? Mr. Administrator, did you want to share?
No, I think that's, that's covered, but that's what I was going to seek. I'll come back with a recommendation, some possible sites, have to speak into all department heads that have a stake in the properties. And it would look like some type of a, an authorization for various hunters. Um, but we would come before authorization, you would, you would know what areas are being considered, town areas that are being considered.
So, Dylan, your timing was perfect. It's middle, end of August, it gives us an opportunity to take a look at this. And obviously, we need, if we need to pass an ordinance, that's going to take a couple of readings, so. But thank you for sharing this information. And this is, you know, we've, we've all spread some concerns about whether it's a, a, a gun or it's a, an arrow. You know, we're obviously cognizant to the fact that there's, you know, there's some concerns, right? The adjacent properties and the people who live there absolutely understand that. But we also understand there's also the concerns about the deer population. I'm not talking about property damage at the moment, talking about Lyme disease and, and those issues. So, I think, I think we have always taken these things, small steps, particular things like this. So, I think that's what's happening here, no decision at this point. Want to come back, look at what the administrator and his department heads can come back and talk to us about. And we can take next steps and obviously, if it's in, uh, sorry, if it's a, an ordinance change, um, whether it's a public hearing or not, if the public has some concerns at that point, then of course, we're here to listen. And if there's suggested changes or, uh, massive concerns, we're here to listen. So, or maybe there's massive agreement, I don't know. So, any other dialogue? Mr. Administrator, did you want to share? I'm sorry, it looked like you wanted to say something else.
No, uh, just so we're clear, my intention is not to include firearms at this point. Although, after speak, uh, one of my conversations with the biologist, um, he said that firearms would only include and the only ones that are permitted are muzzle loaders and shotguns. So, we're not talking rifles and pistols and, uh, but that would be acceptable, but we're not even going to consider that.
Not at this point.
I just don't want, uh, the public to be overly alarmed that we're considering, uh, rifles and shotguns in.
Exactly, good point.
It's what's happening right now and there is hunting going on in Bristol with bow and arrow, uh, right now. We would just also include some of the, um, open space areas that the town owns that is quite frankly, quite close to existing hunting. So, there are a couple of spots that we do have in mind.
And we will take the next step. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
So, uh, if I could ask the council to add an agenda item, um, to recognize a tremendous individual, um, Nathan Simas as a Eagle Scout, could we have a motion?
So, I'll move.
Is there a second? Is Nathan here? Are you the one that looks like an Eagle Scout? Outstanding, I love it. Nathan, could you come up? So, I know that you, um, thank you for coming. And we recognized your brethren at our last meeting, also named Nathan. Interesting stuff here. We asked him to share just a moment, and let me just back up just a sec. Mo, when Eagle Scout Court of Honor, one of the, this council, different members, I know I've gone to a lot, a lot of them. One of the things we all enjoy a lot is hearing kind of your biggest challenge of how you got to an Eagle Scout. And I must tell you, this council and we represent the town, so the administrator, the clerk, everyone that's here, it is a tremendous thing that you've achieved.
Thank you.
That cannot be understated. And it's tremendous in and of itself, it's also tremendous because of how you got there, your age. And there are, what is it, like seven percent of scouts actually make it to Eagle Scout? I mean, think of those numbers, think of the tremendous place. So, but I'm talking, I want to hear from you. Tell us about kind of your, you, what's, what was your biggest challenge? What was your biggest thing that you had to get over and your biggest pride, pride point to be an Eagle Scout?
Well, I think that the hardest point is actually the workbooks that you go through. The experiences that you go through are the easy parts, but when you have to, when it comes down to writing down what you learned and how you learned and what you have to adapt in the future to change is kind of the hardest part. So, I have a couple, um, like some memories and talking about my project as well.
Of course.
So, good evening, my name is Nathan Simas and I'm an Eagle Scout in Troop Two Bristol. And I appreciate the town of Bristol for recognizing my service as a scout. Uh, when I look back at all the great memories I have made and will continue to make with this skillset I have implemented throughout my ten years in Scouts, from chopping wood for fires to paddling fifty miles in a river, eating Spam out of a can and learning to weld and cook. Those are just some of the simple memories that I will, that will always be with me. I have made countless friends within my troop and other troops at Scout Camp. I am very grateful for the opportunity to be an active part of the Bristol community as a scout. I participated in various service projects, our troop cleaned brush from many right-of-way access points, volunteered at the food drives and stocking supplies to the Bristol Food Kitchen and many activities from the aging population here in our town. For my Eagle Scout project, I set up monoflament line receptacles in five locations around Bristol. These monoflament line receptacles help keep the local fishing spots clean by having a place to deposit fishing line. I saw the impact as soon as they were installed. I went weekly to empty them and couldn't believe how full they were. These receptacles are made out of PVC piping and the signage tells you all about the project. This monoflament line that's collected is sent off to be repurposed and recycled, so it stays out of the water and stays away from the fur, the fish, birds and animals. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak about my project and my scouting journey. I also appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today as an Eagle Scout.
Mom and dad here?
Yes.
Can you raise your hands? I would just take a moment to say, I can't imagine how proud you are. You must be. It's, I, you know, a lot of us have, uh, kids and to achieve success, I keep saying that. And I like to say that too at, at the Court of Honor. It is tremendous to be that focused this early in your life and that on your resume. Actually, I'll take that back, that's important, but now you know it and that's more important than anything else. So, this is a small token to recognize your achievement. And this is from this council, the administrator and actually the whole town. And we get to speak on behalf of the town and we say to you, congratulations, come on up.
Thank you.
Wow. Quite an offer there.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I five, that's the executive session, we move to the end.
Yes, please.
The next item on the agenda is I six, this is Director Williamson, and this is in regards to the proposal for the seasonal outdoor dining regulations.
Diane.
Hello, so you have in your packets the proposal that I solicited from one of our, um, engineering firms, we did an RFQ a while ago and they seem to be the most qualified for, I thought, this, this project. So, we reached out to them, I believe I captured, uh, the things that the council wanted this study to look at in terms of the outdoor dining regulations, setting out criteria for the outdoor dining use licenses and, um, creating a checklist, having a workshop with the businesses to solicit public, you know, their public, uh, having a public workshop with them. And, um, the one thing that I didn't include, but I, I believe we could easily add it to the scope is the fee. And the one thing that I didn't include, but I I believe we could easily add it to the scope, is the fee for the for the permit. But the proposal from the consultant was $12,600. And if you are in agreement with it, I guess it would be your decision to move forward with this. And if you have any questions or need any other edits to the scope, I can certainly go back to the consultant and, you know, refine this further with them.
So just to restate the goal, this was, this came out of our conversation about, particularly with State Street was was the premise behind it, but this is not just about State Street, this is about the town. This is to come up with guidelines that this council can use to, if it so chooses, to take the next step, to then apply those guidelines to different parts, including State Street, but different parts of the town, if the council so chooses to do so. So give us parameters, for example, accessible parking, what kind of protection for the public, so Jersey barrier-esque. And then also, tell me when you disagree, okay, I just want to make sure. And then also, kind of the the aesthetics of it, not just a Jersey barrier, but making sure that it's in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood, wherever that may be. Did I, is that okay?
So I think you had compared this earlier to sort of like the design regulations in the subdivision and development review regulations that the planning board enforces, somewhat similar, where, like, for example, for street trees, we have in those regulations, a list of acceptable species for street trees. You know, we have different requirements for the width of walkways and so forth. And so I think what I what I heard was that you're looking for sort of a design guideline with information that the businesses can then use to apply to you in the future for the outdoor dining permits. And it would be something that would give them guidance to, you know, hopefully will outline what our vision is for these outdoor dining spaces, and then the regulations would give the businesses guidelines to, when they submit to you, show how they're going to meet those, that vision. I sort of see it as somewhat regulatory, but almost more in my mind, say for lack of a, like a picture book of, you know, these are the types of barriers that we want, this is the type of lighting that we want. I think that the goal is to make it aesthetically pleasing, make it safe, make it ADA compliant, make it something that can be easily dismantled if we need to for storm, for storm preparedness. So what I heard was sort of, you know, we need to set sort of the expectations for what the town wants to see as the vision for these outdoor dining areas, if people are gonna apply to you for them. And my goal was that this consultant will help us get to that place where we'll have a good set of guidance, regulations, a checklist, what we want to see in terms of a site plan, you know, all the, all the, all the parameters in the application to you. And then you'll be able to say, okay, you meet our guidelines, or you don't, and, you know, review permits that way, right?
Excellent. Council?
I just wanted to say, Diane, I mean, I think that's good. Except that I think that I'm sort of thinking about this a little bit more as in actual design too. So like, so those guidelines might be okay, but let's say State Street. I mean, this person might like this one, this one might like this one, but we want that to have some sort of coordinated look. You know, versus, I mean, you know, another part of town could have something else if you went down on Thane Street, whatever. But I think it would be kind of, whether it's facilitated by the engineering firm, if they do all the things that you talked about, or whether it would be, you know, like, they get together afterwards. Somehow, I think what I was hoping for, and you know, when we talked about this, was somewhere around February-ish, we get an actual plan from the businesses or from the consultant, say, this is what State Street's gonna look like, is this gonna be a good plan? Are you guys gonna accept it? Because we need to order this stuff so we can open and make. I mean, I think that's more than just the guidelines. I mean, that's what I was hoping to say, so it may be, it may be embedded in what you're saying, but I think it needs to be really clear about that. Then if there's another area that wants to take a look, you know, we're gonna like, look at this somewhere else, then that's fine. But we know that the State Street, those three, four restaurants are going to need to come back with something. And that was what was sort of the holdup this year. And I also want to make sure that, and I think you said this, I think it's in here, but it's the businesses, all the businesses, not just the restaurants. It's the other people who have, you know, a stake in this in the parking. And, you know, some of the property owners and residents as well. That way, you know.
Yes. So we talked about doing a public workshop with the Bristol business owners and residents to obtain public input on the plan.
I just think that the State Street project designed for somebody to come back to us, whether it's like the engineer, or whether it was the businesses. Somebody needs to come back to us with this is, you know, so I was kind of envisioning like, here's a bunch of designs in other places, here's the kind of things, like I sent to you, I just happened to get it from somebody that was, I think, telemarketing me via email, as far as barriers, I sent it to Zach, I sent it to you, Diane.
I did, yes.
I think to Tim. You know, like, I didn't realize they were the clear ones, for example. But then what is the right amount, like, I think they said in that, I only read it quickly. It was maybe, I can't like, like 30, like, maybe it would be safe in a 30 mile an hour crash, but not beyond that, like, so what are those specs that are safe for somebody that's gonna be in a road like that? You know, and then, and what are those options that are out there? So that you're not having like Jersey barriers per se, but you still got something else.
But I, I hear what you're saying about the need for, in in that area in particular, and maybe in other areas, a coordinated approach to this so that we have, again, a set of expectations. And maybe we decide, okay, we're gonna use, we only want clear barriers, and in this area, everybody has to do the clear barrier, or however we
Or have an input from them, I think we just wanted, and I think all of the people that we had worked with, like, you know, in the, in the early summer, they're all very willing to like, figure it out too, but, you know, as long as we can have something that comes, they can order what they want, and they're not in the situation they were this year. And I mean, so I think all the design guidelines are good, I don't want to, I don't want to like, poo poo that. I mean, it's good to have, because as other areas come up with this, but I think that particular, because you've got that clear shot as you come down State Street, you've got the water view, and you've got the, and I think, I think those four restaurants want to do that, they want something, you know, good, so.
I tend to agree with Mary in regards to the the scope of work, Diane, and you, you listened very, very well. I, I was looking at the par engineering work, and I think the public workshops are gonna be extremely beneficial. But I agree with Mary, we're like, we should start on a micro level, get State Street out of the way, and then kind of move to that macro level and start to look at other, other areas. But if we can kind of get the outside dining cleaned up, and I'm not gonna repeat everything you said, but you nailed all the design, making it work, making it work with our architecture, the comprehensive trash recycling bike racks, all that stuff, as far as making sure it's cohesive and locked down for maybe a February review.
So maybe it's a, it's a, there's a townwide element, but then there's an area of like, special study for the State Street piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely think that, and to keep in mind, whatever supply chain issue still might be out there, but just to get something together so that it may, like, I feel like I, I drive by there all the time, of course, because of where I live. And I don't see a lot of people sitting outside, but I think it's partly because it's so hot. So I think we missed a great window of opportunity, like in that May, June, we had so many things going on in June, like down on the waterfront. So, you know, we want to make sure they're ready to go to that.
I'm a little confused, okay? Because we're gonna spend $12,100 for State Street only, is that what I'm hearing?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, well, all right, I, I'm in agreement with that.
Cars and the parking and all that stuff.
Yeah, right.
That backside, which is not really great right now.
Right.
Okay, but we, this should be a plan for townwide, now should not be strictly just for for State Street. What I'm hearing is, let's stay focused on State Street.
That's not what I said, I, what I said
Well, maybe we should replay the tape. But the folk, what I heard from both of you is, let's stay focused with State Street and go from there and expand to the next level. I see.
I, I'll let you finish, but then I'll tell you what I said. I didn't say that, I said, I said
Okay, may I continue? Thank you, okay. Because, I mean, I'm looking for guidance throughout the town. So if there is other businesses throughout the town, we can apply that, but not strictly say, okay, this is what's applicable. And as far as what is for each business, they should bring, they should come with their own plan under the guidance that we'll provide to them, that's how I view it. I don't view it like, okay, we gotta spend, send a consultant with them, and say, no, here's the guidance that's being provided, that's being generated, created. And based on that, you come back with a plan, and we'll read it, approve or not approve it. But that should be for townwide, not strictly for one area of town.
But there's some sections of town that are all different.
I agreed, but that being said, this provides guidance though. I mean, we hire a company, par engineering, okay, to do that. And these folks, they're gonna be meeting with the business, if the folks are interested, let's meet with them.
I, I think, I, I agree, and I said that, everything that Diane said of what they're going to do is what I agree with. But I do think that we're already up against, like, because we're going this route, we're just getting this back to here. At some point, we need a plan, wherever it comes from, whether it's them guiding the businesses, or, and, you know, I mean, we can't come back with like, anything in, you know, April, May, because they're not gonna get anything purchased in flowers and plants and anything else. We need, we've sort of kicked this, it's, it's not really our fault, but I'm just saying, like, you know, we tried to do this, and we don't want to see the same thing happen. That is the most reasonable place right now for outside dining, that's the area, there's always a certain area. And that happens to be it. I, I think that that has to be, some degree of that plan has to be included to make sure something is submitted. Whether, whether the consultant says, okay, you guys down here on, you know, we, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna work on the road, we're gonna work on the handicap accessible parking around these old areas. We're gonna make sure that it's definitely clear, no matter where we talk about, that the other non-restaurant businesses want parking nearby. And, but who's gonna lead the charge to make sure these four restaurants come up with a cohesive plan, given our guidelines? They may need to set that meeting up for them, and they need to figure it out. I just don't want to see that get by the wayside, and we're sitting here next April, or, you know, March, and there's like, a bunch of guidelines, like, hey, take your pick, you can pick this kind of a wooden barricade, you can pick this clear one, you can do this. Because that's like, you know, you've got to have like 18th century lighting, whatever it's gonna be, I'm not, you know, just making these things up. I mean, that's okay, but in the meantime, we put this one area off for almost a year. And they weren't, they weren't ready, and it was partly on us and partly on everybody else. So we need to make sure that that they're ready to, that's all I'm saying. I don't think it's like, two separate projects, Diane, I think it's just like, a little subcommittee of this project.
So for myself, I just think they, I don't think this plan needs to talk about what color and what kind of design. I think it needs to give us guidelines to work within. Handicaps is a great example of parking availability. What is appropriate when you start closing off parking spaces? What needs to happen on that? What kind, so State Street we'll use as a great example, the pitch of the road. Is there something that needs to happen when, you know, State Street, this is our, this was the primary, this is where this, the the emphasis is coming from, this is where we started, right? So we use State Street, the pitch of the road, is there something that we need to do to make it accessible to all? If there's seating out there. So, but I don't, the, the kind of barriers on stuff, honestly, is, if, if we can give a couple of examples as base, and then we want, we want them to be prettier, if you will, for lack of a better term, and is whether it's a Jersey barrier, whatever it is, right? But give some basic parameters on, you've got a straight street, this is what you need to do. I don't have a problem with starting with State Street, but this is townwide. So as long as State Street is looked at, and then we use examples of other portions of the town. So for example, Thane Street, Wood Street, High Street, just kind of as quick examples, and say, what does it look like over there? If your business is on the corner, does it require different kinds of barriers, right? But I don't think, honestly, we will get into what the restaurant presents to us. But if you look at downtown, I mean, most of the storefronts are very similar, right? So I think that if that conveyed out into the, to, look, I don't, I don't want you all, the guys get the wrong idea. I think that the, if we're gonna do this, we should have a good plan. That's the right idea. I didn't vote for using the public spaces at all, I'm not gonna vote for the public spaces. But I also believe that if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. So why, if these things are gonna come back in front of us again, let's have the systems in place that even if I don't vote for it, it's still good process and policy, so.
And next, Chairman, I agree with you, I think, you know, I think having this powerful consultant as a, using them as a tool is gonna help us develop those regulation, those regulations. So the ADA, the safety items, the illumination, the design, those types of things. And we kind of use that as sort of a template, and a, like, almost like a, like a design to be able to apply to other parts of town. So I just think it's, it's sort of the next step for us to do.
So, and I think that that State Street's a great example of something that needs to be focused on specifically, like Wood Street and Thane Street are just examples. But I think there's similarities with Thames and Wood and other straight roads with good, clear visibility, such and so forth. So I don't think we need to get that deep in the woods.
But in which, in which streets are appropriate for it? You know, because that, some streets may be narrower, and they may
It's a great point, it's a great point.
And Mary, this is where that public workshop with par will flush that out. You know, I mean, I think that's gonna be really nice, I think that's gonna be a pivotal direction. Yeah. Yeah.
So, hearing all of that, do we need to make any changes in what's in front of us, or we just need to support this and then take the next steps?
Take the next step, I'd like a motion to approve the proposal for seasonal outdoor dining with the par engineering consultant plan.
That's good. And, Mayor, discussion, Diane?
I just want to make sure where, where I'm funding this from.
Oh, we have no idea, doesn't matter.
You didn't ask Julius area?
We didn't, Santa Claus? Sarah, the, the food and meals taxes that we, we get from the town, I hear they're upwards of $460,000. And we know, we, we know this outside dining and cleaning this area up is going to increase that. Is there funding or a funding source that we can tap into that would, that would be related to this?
So I think I can, if I may, Mr. Administrator?
Of course, Chairman.
Yes, is that, if this council were to authorize this, and then have and ask Sarah to come to our next meeting with some proposed accounts to come from this? I think Tim brought up a great example of one. Those funds typically go to the general fund, of course, so. But if this council is in agreement, then we can approve this, and at our next meeting, have a proposal back to us of what fund we should pull from to spend this $12,100. Is everybody okay with that? Mr. Administrator?
Sounds like a nice.
Is that okay?
Perfect.
All right. Does that set us back another month?
$12,100.
Well, I know. But are we, are we set back another month?
We're gonna
And we're gonna authorize the funds, and then we can have, right? And it would seem like the most appropriate, I think Tim hit it on the head, that, that pull from our meals and bed tax. Specifically from that, we'll call it account, it's not actually, but, so. Anything else? Any other discussion from the council?
No.
I just wanted to
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, I forget. Marge McBride, Three Avenger Court.
I understand you're on the school committee, is that right?
For, for a little while. I still have a little more time there. You received a report of noncompliance for State Street. I have a copy of that report. When I came here, I'm gonna say June, the attorney said that you would tell everybody that they had to put, that they could have outdoor dining, would have to be ADA compliant, and it's not. And, and I have the report with me, and I believe the report has been disseminated. So my question to you is, you continue to allow State Street to not be compliant with ADA requirements, and you're waiting until the following year until you actually think about that. And I've been looking at all of you as individuals over the years and saying, when is this going to happen? And it just never seems to quite happen. So I've asked some of you to, to ride in a wheelchair for the day in this town. I've asked some of you to try and, and see what it's really like I've asked some of you to try and, and see what it's really like to navigate this town, to try to navigate State Street, to try to park. I mean, you all see me at the bagel shop, but you don't see my husband. And you don't see my husband because he's in a wheelchair. And because there is no place for him to go. So, but I'm talking about straight, State Street. And I know that the state of Rhode Island came down and said that these things need to be corrected immediately and not next year. So I wonder when this council is going to take notice of the fact that you're not in compliance with ADA requirements for outdoor dining.
Mr. Administrator.
Let me answer that. So we did.
Thank you.
Well, within the last seven days, I would say we did get a report from an ADA compliance officer that came down, was working with our building official onsite, identified some areas. And on Monday, we set forth a plan to add van accessible spaces. So the two existing spaces on State Street that are in front of the businesses, they need to be widened to allow a van, van access. This is something very new. And we did have a staff meeting with department heads on Monday and the DPW director is working on that. There are, in addition to those spaces, there's going to be one added at the State Street dock. And there'll be one added at the Church Street dock. So this is something that we just can't do overnight. And the compliance officer did acknowledge that they understand there's going to be a little bit of time. Quite frankly, there's another space that they're asking for. It would be in front of the two central businesses in that outdoor dining area. Things Foglia and Bar 31. There needs to be an additional space put there. And quite frankly, we're waiting to see what was going to happen with this study. Because it needs to be designed, that third space. So we're going to lose, actually, one more, not say lose, because we're going to add a handicap. But the handicap are double spaces because they need to be banned spaces. So understand, we are, by allowing outdoor dining, we're eliminating parking spaces.
Mr. Administrator, can I, with this council has not, has not seen this report as of yet, correct?
I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. I don't know. You may have gotten it through your own channels, but this is something very new. Very similar to how we treat the school district with our fire inspections and other safety inspection. We give a little bit of time to mobilize, to get contractors. We're not going to go out there and paint stripes and do it wrong. This is, needs to be something that Director Pearl is working with an outside contractor and an architect to make sure we're doing it proper. And it hasn't been, been kicked around for weeks. This is something.
No, I didn't mean to imply that it had been kicked around for weeks.
Could you, could you tell us what the date of the report is?
Yeah, I have it right here. The claim was on July 20th and the date of the report is August 16th.
Okay, so it was, it was.
Well, I'm just saying.
It was not forwarded to them yet. This is with our departments at this point. We're responding and we did have a meeting on Monday and we do have a plan to get additional handicap spaces striped. The two spaces that are there, as, as you recall, when we permitted the outdoor dining, we had an architect actually design those and look at it. After further review, even the architect didn't get it right. They're, they need to be van spaces and they're not suitable van spaces. So that's why we're on the right track. I said it at the last meeting, this is very complicated. This isn't within our ability to solve and design these areas. This needs to be a professional that goes out. We're not, we're not, we're, we're good department heads, but we're not engineers.
My frustration, Mr. Administrator, is that we got here, we pushed this forward very quickly. And when we do those things, it always comes, well, not always, it's too strong, almost always comes back to bite. So I march.
No, I'd like to apologize. I did not mean.
Thank you.
To.
Because it, it did come across as we, we said, yeah, we see the report, but it doesn't mean anything to us.
No, no, I, I didn't mean to. I thought you had seen the report and I did not mean to catch you off guard. But the report also requires parking spaces at the State Street dock. It requires a space across the street from the State Street Dining where you have it blocked off. And it requires another spot in the town parking area. And it requires it without delay. So my, my question to you is, how much longer? Let me see, my husband, my husband hasn't been downtown in, since you started the outdoor dining. So how much longer does he have to wait until you make it accessible for him to use the town that he pays taxes in, that you honor him for, that you give him certificates for, but he can't get there? And so I'm saying, I'm requesting, and it's probably out in left field and I don't care, but if I don't ask for it, I'm never going to know if I can get it. But until and unless you are ADA compliant, there'll be no outdoor dining. Because you are breaking ADA regulations by doing what you're doing right now. And now you know it.
It's a great question. So we, the administrator has already, has expressed that he is addressing it right now with, with his staff. Mr. Administrator, I'm not going to put you too much on the point because I have no idea what needs to happen next. But generally speaking, do we have an idea, we have to stripe areas? We have to, I would assume also that it requires ordinance on each one of these handicap parking, correct?
Would you like a copy of this?
No, no, I don't believe we need.
Mr. Solicitor, do you know? I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry. No parkings require ordinance. Does a handicap parking?
Now, there's, there's state law on handicap parking that kind of overrides everything, both for private and public space. I do not believe we have to actually adopt.
So for clarity.
I think we can work with the administration.
So for clarity, we get requests from the public for handicap parking spaces on.
Their houses.
Why would this be any different?
So again, our harbor master, our DPW, I believe our DPW director, and a lot of time was spent with his ADA coordinator and Steve Greenleaf, our building official. There's criteria. If you have a parking lot with, or a business that has 25 parking spaces, you need one van handicap space. So there are things like that. That's why they, they met at the Maritime Center. That was one of our facilities. So these are ADA laws. I, I, I don't think we need ordinances for them.
Okay.
You would want an ordinance if somebody wanted a handicap space for their house. I think that's what the confusion is. But these are businesses. These are a public accessible businesses, so they go by the ADA statute. So.
The reason why.
It's in, it's in progress and my apologies that it's, it's taking a while. We thought we were in compliance up until late last week. We've learned that the spaces are not wide enough and we need to add some. It is in progress as of Monday morning. Director Perella is reaching out to some vendors to try to get them professionally striped. We don't, we don't know how to design those handicap van spaces and we want to make sure we get them right. So it just, give us 10 day, 10 business days, I'm assuming.
There you go, Mark.
But again, this is very, this is very new. This was, this was a Monday discussion. This, this has not been going on for weeks, where we learned that we are in violation.
And I'm not inferring, nor is this council that it was.
No, and I'm not, I'm not either. I just know that once you're informed that you're not in compliance, that you need to do something so that you're immediately back in compliance until such time as you can change whatever it is you need to change. I have a copy here, which I'd be glad to give to you that was sent to me. But I have a problem every time I go downtown and see that you don't pay attention to it. What, what you, the two spaces. I can get my husband out of the car. I can lift the wheelchair out of the car. I can put it down. He can sit in it. But I can't get him on the curb. I mean, I can't get him on the sidewalk because there's no place for me to go to get him on the sidewalk. Unless I go to the end of the street and then push him up the hill or hold him from rolling down the hill. So there's lots of different things going on here. And I really would have appreciated it if all of you would have taken those ADA compliance needs into account before you rushed ahead and said, yeah, outdoor dining is great. It is great. I love sitting outside on Tuesday mornings. It's, it's a, it's beautiful, it's noisy, but it's being part of the town. But you're cutting off a whole group of people who can't do that. And I have a problem with that. I have a real problem with that and I think that you should too. So that's what I wanted to say about that. Nathan, if you want a copy of this report?
Yes, please.
I'll give it to you, but it's very clear and it says, any other existing accessible spaces created throughout the town must be made compliant without delay. And I'll give you an example. You have a, a parking lot out here that you rent or you do whatever, that backs up to the Y. And that's a wonderful parking place and it has handicap spots in it, which can't go anywhere. Because when you go through the arches and you go to go down onto Hope Street, all you can do is go downstairs. Now that whole thing was refurbished. And I learned a long time ago when we built schools that when you go over a certain percentage of change, that you have to be ADA compliant. It's not. So what does, good does it do me to have an ADA spot unless I'm going to the oyster bar or I'm coming here? So I, there's a lot of things that you need to, to take a look at. But for right now, I respectfully request, and you can deny my request and I'll still smile at you tomorrow. But I respectfully request that you will limit, eliminate outdoor dining until you're ADA compliant.
Thank you. So I agree, and so does this council, that handicap accessible parking spaces need to be fixed. I agree with the frustration, but I also believe that the administrator in his department has addressed this, was aware of it on Monday and is addressing. And I think that's in my head immediate. I, even though I did not vote for the use of this, I do not, first, what's on our agenda tonight would be inappropriate for us to vote to not allow it. Just so we, just advertising it correctly and having open dialogue is not the way to do that. So I appreciate the request. I do not, it is not appropriate for us to weigh in either way on that. And for us to address alcohol issues in particular, as a show cause hearing, multiple steps to go, they can happen fast, but not as fast as one conversation in one evening. Your frustration is expressed well and it is heard. I agree. My colleagues agree. The administrator agrees. We're addressing it. It needs to be addressed. My, my saying this to you says that it should not have been this way. We understand there's an issue and we're going to fix it.
I appreciate that. And it's from a chair to a chair. I know what you can and you can't discuss. And I'm not necessarily asking you to have a full discussion on it. I'm just making, trying to make my point. And it is the middle of August and it still isn't ADA compliant. And so I just wanted everybody to know that because there's just, I'm sure there are a lot of other frustrated people.
There is.
On this planet besides me over what's been going on. So thank you for listening and you can disseminate that report or I'll send it to whoever wants it, but.
I'll make sure.
That's where you are.
I'll get it to the clerk and we'll get it to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we had a motion made by Tim seconded by Mary to approve the proposal. Was there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J1. And this is the RFP opening that was held today for 992, the Stormwater Improvement for St. Police Station. The bid opening was today at noon. We did receive two bids for that. The first bid received was from Flynn Enterprise, Inc. That was with a base amount of $244,000 with an alternate amount of $90,000 with a total bid price of $334,000. And then Key Corporation, the base bid amount of $278,000 with an alternate amount of $55,500, leaving a total base bid of 200, that's not right, 333,500.
Motion reserved, referred to the Town Administrator Act in the best interest of the town. Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony to refer to the administrator. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is K1. This is Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority with the monthly report from July of 2022.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony, receive and file. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay. If I'm reading through it, I see that Mr. Klepper, after 34 years, I believe it was, he's retiring. So we certainly, with great gratitude for all that he has done, you know, we should send a thank you letter.
That's what I was going to say, because he's done a lot, just taking on even these reports as a separate project has been really helpful.
So I will, so that was, who made that motions?
I did, I did. Yeah, I made my motion. Yes.
Excellent. Tony, you reseconding that?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is K2. This is Bristol County Water Authority with their fiscal year 2022 annual report.
Make a motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Tony seconded by Tim to receive and file. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is L1. This is the resolution to sell town property at 9 Port Street, Lot 14, Lot 26.
Motion to accept the resolution. Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony to accept and approve the resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Solicitor.
The motion now would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A5 with reference to the sale of real estate. Specifically, the Oliver School located at 151 State Street.
Counsel?
Some of.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So this council is going into executive session. We will be back to close the meeting in public, but this will end the televised portion. Good night, everyone.